The ones that you shower in, and we know about, and even the ones that we don't know about. Lord, we ask your blessings upon our meeting tonight. Send your Holy Spirit to grant us wisdom that we make good decisions and guide your people here in West Covina. Lord, we ask all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor Sanderson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hurford.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Setello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here.
Thank you so much, and at this time, I will ask for reporting out from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we had three items in closed session tonight. First was conference with real property negotiators. The negotiators were Mr. Chung, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Freeland. The negotiating parties were Educational Media Foundation concerning the terms of a lease. Staff gave the city council a report on the item. There was action taken, but it's not reportable action because it has not been communicated to their side as of yet. The other item was liability claims pursuant to government code 5495-6.95, a claim by CGM Development Incorporated. There was no reportable action on that item. The other was public employees' performance evaluation. There was a brief discussion on that item, and that item was continued, and there was no reportable action. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much for that. Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No, there are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you so much. And we do have one item for presentation, however, they will be coming to another meeting due to scheduling conflicts. So with that, we drop down to our oral communications portion of our meeting. This is where we have a five-minute speaking limit, and you can address your concerns if you need to fill out the speaker cards at the top of the stairs. And just to let the community know that we do have requirements for government code sections in reference to responding back and forth, but what we can do is if you have concerns that are not on tonight's agenda, we can get maybe with you. You could give us a call, and we can do our very best to try and deal with any of the concerns that you should have. So with that, I'll call forward our first speaker, Katrina Barcena.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Katrina Barcena, and I am with the West Covina Youth Soccer Group. The reason why I'm coming before you this evening is because I understand that there are some funds that are going to be coming available for recreation and for the sports. I just wanted to be here to express my concern as a mother, a West Covina resident, and part of the soccer league for the past five, six years. I have three sons that participate. I also work with all of our under-six and under-eight coaches and kids. The teams that I work with, there's about 36 teams, and there's a lot of kids that I personally work with within West Covina, the West Covina Youth Soccer. I believe it was four years ago, there was some plans that were made for Orangewood Park. And what a better way to utilize that money, that funding that would be available, to the sports program and gear that towards soccer. We've been at these meetings several times before expressing our concerns, and I just wanted to express the urgency of getting fields for West Covina Youth Soccer. We're a big league. We have many of our parents and kids that have come out tonight to show the support. We want to let you guys know that soccer is a big part of West Covina. It's growing, season after season, we're growing, and we need to make sure that we have fields that are sufficient enough to hold our league and our kids. We don't want them running the streets. We don't want them graffitiing. We don't want any of them out there doing bad things. We want them to stay focused, and that's what we do teach in soccer, is not only being focused in the game, but how important school is, how important our community is, and we do instill that in our children. So as that money becomes available, we would ask that you consider West Covina Youth Soccer and the fields at Orangewood Park as a way to utilize that money. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Edwin Corden.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Councilmembers. Yes, I'm Edwin Corden, a coach of the Flaming Tigers in the West Covina Youth Soccer League. I'm a volunteer coach for U6 and U8 Division. I grew up in Los Angeles, but now I make West Covina my home for the last six years, and my family and I are here all present. I have three children, two of which play in the league. I coached their teams, and I was impressed to see how many children play in these leagues. When my son wanted to play, I said, "Okay, let's go play," and I volunteered to coach. And since then, I am not only loving it, but I'm hooked on it to see just how many people participate in this sport. The one thing I see in West Covina, everything's great, I love it, I'm not going anywhere, my children will grow up in West Covina, but I do not see any soccer-specific youth complex anywhere around in the city. And I think it's really needed for as many children as there are interested in the sport and playing the sport. If there aren't any funds available, which I understand there are, I plead and I urge to please consider using them for a soccer-specific youth complex. I believe that we have that. There's a plan in place or in process, and these funds can be utilized somewhere in the Orangewood Park on the backside of the nice skating rink that we have over there. That's pretty much what I wanted to say tonight, but thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Art Ballen.
Ballen.
I'm sorry. I... Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson, City Council, City staff. My name's Art Ballen, and I'm the president of West Covina Youth Soccer. Been involved with the league for probably about 19 years now, and a lot of you I've worked with, both with the staff and City Councilmembers. And there's a big need for soccer in our community. And in some ways, we're kind of left behind. If you see that surrounding cities, they have addressed this problem in their community. And I don't want to see it's a problem that we have in our community, because I think we could resolve some of the shortcomings that we have as far as complexes that we could build. And when I was first told about these funds that are going to be available for parks, I said, "Great." We spend the time, the energy, we put the master plan out to bid, the city spends at least, I think, close to $100,000, $150,000 just on city funds to build this complex. And I can't see any other reason why these funds shouldn't be going towards a soccer Definitely in need of a complex here. We're the only youth soccer organization in West Covina, and we are the largest. From all baseball, basketball, and football, we are the largest. And for us not to have a place that we call home, I just can't understand that. We've been here since 1969, 1969, you guys, and we haven't found a home for us. It's time. We're definitely overdue, and I'm not going to repeat some of the things that the speakers before me said, so I want to thank you for your time, and I hope that you can see where these funds could be used at, definitely at a site where you could build a soccer complex. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Manuel Robles.
I'm here representing Hope Services. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. This spring, we began conversations with the good people of Westfield Mall to try to find a way to enhance the image of people with disabilities and provide an opportunity for them to have gainful employment. Often in the mall environment, people with disabilities are seen as frequenting the food court, and to many, it seems as killing time. With the unemployment rate of people with disabilities over 80 percent, Hope Services and Westfield Corporation agreed to a program that could help in both areas. The West Covina Mall donated space for a donation center on its grounds to be used for training in the area of litter abatement. Hope Services contacted the local Department of Rehabilitation and the Lincoln Center and hired five people to work for the operation. All five people make minimum wage or higher and have a benefit package. The donation center itself is occupied seven days a week for eight hours each day. Furthermore, trucks are on call to pick up any discards which are left outside the container anytime. The people at the donation center are friendly, courteous, and helpful. Their presence and their personalities both work to change the image people may have of other people with disabilities. Furthermore, the donation center is a convenient way for people to recycle their e-waste, household items, and clothing. Every weekday morning at 7:30 a.m., a three-person crew and supervisor arrives and performs litter abatement in some of the areas of the shopping mall grounds. These actions make the mall cleaner and more pleasant experience, and again allow patrons to see people with disabilities contributing to their community and earning a wage. At Hope Services, we are aware of the reputation donations bins have acquired throughout California, dropped in locations without property owner approval, often by organizations that are nonprofit but make no effort to disclose that, and left unattended to become an eyesore on the landscape. Many municipalities are taking actions to eliminate their existence. We ask the City Council of West Covina to view our donation center differently, with complete cooperation from the Westfield Corporation, corporation personnel on site seven days a week, viable employment for five people with disabilities, and submission of requests for two business licenses from the city of West Covina. We would like the council to exclude the donation center from the discussion of donation bin elimination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Elsie Messman.
My name is Elsie Messman, and I've been a resident of West Covina since 1972. I'm here tonight to oppose the building of 135 townhomes. If these 135 townhomes have two cars per home, that means 270 more cars in the area. Even 200 cars is too much. Plus, there's a train next door. Number two, WC Homes LLC did not have a valid corporation license.
Ms. Messman, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but this is a public hearing item. We will have speakers.
But I've got a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, no, you'll come back at the public hearing. Is that correct, the City Attorney? Yeah, because you didn't mark on your card that it's a public hearing, and you will get to come back up and speak when we address that item. Did you want to speak about something else other than the public hearing item? Item number 13?
Well, no, I'll include everything at the same time, then.
Is that okay? I guess there's laws. City Clerk, can you please address this? You're allowed to speak under oral communications on other items besides the public hearing at this time. Then when the public hearing begins, you'll come back to the podium and address that item independently during the public hearing.
Just independently?
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll go on to the next ones, okay?
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. What I'm going to talk about is in regard to the Planning Commission comment at the last meeting. First of all, we do not trust our elected or appointed officers, as time and time again they have showed they are not interested in the city. They are only interested what's in it for me. The speaker last week, as you know, who had said, "We were too negative." Well, that person has collected $3,000 in salary in 2005 from Tui, $750 in salary in 2009, and $2,500 in salary from Mr. Tui on his 460 forms, and probably there's more. So we wonder why the Planning Commission voted yes, okay? I think that's a conflict of interest. And then the lawsuit that has to be filed by the residents against the city to save the hill. What a shame that the only benefit, that so far it has benefited the attorneys only. Residents won the lawsuit, wasn't enough for the council, they appealed it, so more attorney fees. When are we going to say no to the attorney? If we are looking for housing, wasn't Wick's Furniture Project given to the Charles Company, a Tui client developer, for more retail and housing? Why isn't it getting started now? Mr. Chung had stated numerous times that the only thing that we could build up at the heights was a $45 million golf course. Sounds like some wheeling and dealing going on there, because that's what they want. Why can't we put solar panels up there, and the city can sell power back to Southern California Edison or use it ourselves and not endanger anyone's life? We have five cell towers within five blocks, and another approved to put in a fire station at Nogales and Shadow Oak. Next door is a daycare center with approximately 70 children. The last council voted yes. Yet, when they were going to put one in South Hills, Councilman Hurford said that it would block the view. Really? It wasn't approved. Same city, wrong area. We had to fight for Shadow Oak Park, and there's still no covers over the tables. Closest restroom is a half a mile away, and no covers over the sand area where equipment for children to play, and no fence so the children could not fall down a steep embankment, just to name a few items. This city is not what you know, it's who you know and where you live. You hear us, but you're still not listening. Hopefully, sooner or later, you are going to wake up. And Councilman Sykes, I know that you are outnumbered, but hang in there. November is coming. Thank you.
I'm going to ask for no applause, please. Our next speaker is Mr. Herb Redholtz.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson, and Councilmembers, and everybody here tonight. I want to briefly address an item that was on your closed-session agenda that the City Attorney alluded to a few moments ago. The item, of course, there was no action taken, so there was nothing to report, but I think it's important for the residents to realize that CGM Development has filed a liability claim against the city of West Covina. CGM Development is the developer of the proposed office building here at Civic Center. Obviously, a claim is the first step towards a lawsuit, another lawsuit regarding this unwanted project. I am asking you tonight to please stop the bleeding, stop the hemorrhaging of West Covina taxpayer dollars going to continue to fight for a project that only you want. Again, all you're hearing is people coming forward not wanting this project, no one. There's no groundswell of support for that project, and frankly, it's not necessary. We don't need another empty office building, especially one sitting on our campus at City Hall. So please, again, I say to you, all you're doing is creating a windfall, a bonanza for the attorneys at the expense of your taxpayers. Please listen to your taxpayers. And when I was on the Planning Commission, I voted no on this project. It was the right decision then, it's the right decision now, and it's what you ought to be doing, saying no to that project and yes to your citizens and your taxpayers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Irene Fleck.
It's library time again. The Summer Reading Program, or the SRP, is under huge operation right now with many, many participants. It's open to everyone from infants to seniors and seniors and seniors. The theme this year, to me, was kind of curious. It's, reading is delicious, but they've developed, this is a national theme, by having special programs such as Create Your Own Ice Cream Sunday, which was a huge success, How to Make a Healthy Pizza, and a Popcorn Salad. And then the finish for this month will be the Hot Doggers Reward Party. So they're making it fit in all kinds of ways. And the reason this program is terribly important, I think, and important to me, is the studies show that if kids keep reading or keep looking at words, and of course now it's not just books, but it's reading, but you have to read, that they don't have to spend as much time in September or August, September, making up for the summer loss. So it's really wonderful to see all these kids and the adults out there continuing their reading. The other thing I wanted to mention is we are a child's place at the library. Upstairs has been completely transformed. If you get a chance, do go over and run upstairs and look at the wonderful job they've done to make it fit all age levels. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Shirley Leon.
Hello, West Covina people. Hello, each and every one of you. I just been thinking here, we're talking about the soccer for the children. Why can't we use the Silti down here on Azusa where it says All-Star for the baseball? Why can't we use one of those for the soccer team? I've been down here most of my life, and I haven't seen anybody go down there and play it. You ask people in my neighborhood, "What? We have one?" Well, why don't we do something? Unfortunately, it's not. Second of all, I'd like to know, when can we start scheduling for the pavement at East Nor Avenue? It is right off of Finnmead before you get to High Castle. We've only been paved three times in our city down here, and it looks like it's really bad. And you know, we're part of the community, shouldn't we look nice, too? And also, I have one here for Andrew McIntyre. I would like to know about you. You are not on the computer. What are you like? Where did you go to school? Did you go to college? Where's your family? And when's your birthday? And what's your background? And your occupation? Why are you here? What gives you... You know, what are you? Can you tell me? Who are you? We don't know. And if you're not on the computer, how can we learn about you? I never saw a picture of you before until tonight. If I met you out in the street, I wouldn't know you at all.
Actually, we're not supposed to go back and forth, but maybe the City Hall's phone number is 626-939-8401. And I mean, if you want to, after everybody's had the chance to speak, because you guys, I mean, I'm going to try and run the best meeting I can. See all these speaker cards? They're stacked, and we don't want to be here till midnight. I appreciate you coming and asking. It's great that you get involved and want to know about our council members. It's fantastic. I'm hoping if that is the way, Mr. City Attorney, I know because we have regulations and whatnot, but we need to also handle.
If you provide a contact number, and we'll certainly pass it on to him to have a video call.
Okay, well, we're on the website.
Okay.
On Google.
Shirley, I've known you for a long time.
Yes.
And any of us on the council are accessible. I'm sure Andrew will meet with you and be happy to tell you about himself.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mayor Louis Arganaga.
Just wanted to say hi, and just wanted to address the City Council to let you guys know that the Water Quality Authority this year, we just wanted to... I don't know if you guys got the report I sent you. We actually received $10 million in property for money this year, and $3 million of it was given to Covina Irrigating Company, which serves a little part of your city. So we gave it to them for them to clean up the groundwater. So we just wanted to report that, and also to keep on your calendars, October 3, and anybody here who goes to college or high school is welcome to... We have a water forum that's coming up in October 3. Keep that on your calendars. I will send you some more information on what's going to be... It's going to be all about water. You guys all know what we did the last year. So it's a really good seminar. It's all day, and anybody, if you guys want to invite any children or any kids in West Covina, let me know. We have some comp available spaces for them. So let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
That concludes our oral communications. I do have a couple quick things of staff. There was one in reference to Nora paving and that area, and maybe we could follow up on that. I don't think... Oh, we have one more card, it looks like. Oh, okay, got it. We have another speaker, and that is Tony Valdez. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Sorry about the late... They didn't have a card when I was up there. First of all, council members and public, briefly, I'm in support of the soccer campaign for a field. Obviously, Mr. Hurford, you know that I've been coaching at West Covina for 20 years, and I've coached in basically all those leagues except for basketball. And the fact that, you know, I'd like to see West Covina soccer be able to finally have a permanent home like West Covina Basketball does. Several of the baseball organizations have a permanent field, at least one. I know they deal with the school district also like we do, but they have at least one permanent home they can call home. Heck, even our dogs have a little park now over there that they can walk around in. So, you know, I'm hoping that it's time that we have someplace we can call home, and we don't have to battle all the time like we do currently. Second item on the agenda, Mr. Hurford knows that over the 20 years of coaching, I've brought hundreds of children in here, and we have honored all those little sports heroes. And just a year ago, my son joined the US Army, and he was just home. He just went back to Ford Drum, New York on Sunday. He went back home. And back in October, I sent an email to the city. I signed up Goat Star member, got his picture on the website, got the letter from Mayor Tui at that time, and got my Goat Star little banner. At that time, the person I was communicating with, I don't know, I think his name was Andrew... Not Andrew, not Andrew, you're Andrew. One of the guys in the city, and he told me at the time that unfortunately, the program had been stopped a couple years ago putting up the banners, and said, "If you want to put one up, if you come up with $400, you can sponsor one, get it to the top of the list, and put one in." So of course, I was down a little bit. But two months ago, I'm coming over to Azusa from the Hacienda Heights area, and I'm driving just past BLD, and I'm looking up and going, "Wow, some of these banners look kind of new." And I caught some faded ones, a couple new ones, and lo and behold, I come up right at the top of the hill, and I see one that says Antonio Baudis Jr. And I just wanted to thank you for honoring my son. It's something that, you know, I'm always going to cherish. I ran home, drove home, jumped on my bike, and biked all the way back there, since there's no crossing there, you know? I went and got my bike, went back so I could take a picture, but I wanted to come first and thank you, council, for honoring my son and putting a banner up for him. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Hurford.
First off, Tony, thank your son for his service to our country. We really appreciate it, and thank you for all your service over the years, too. I want to thank all the soccer people for coming out. This is kind of a unique time in the city of West Covina, and the opportunity is really here to get ourselves a soccer facility. If you've watched some of the developments over the last couple... some of the developments over the last couple of years, for reasons, I guess the economy has driven, the housing market is picking up, and we, when we do housing in the city, we have what we call a park development fee, where the developer has to pay a certain amount of money to, for each unit that he builds in the city. We had a project a couple of years ago, or actually about four years ago, we approved, where it's finally gotten to the point where they're gonna start pulling permits, should bring in, and pretty close to $4 million in park development fees. We have one that's actually on the agenda tonight, that if it goes forward, would bring in a million, $1.7 million in park development fees. And we have a home, a project called Brandywine Homes on Volinda and West Covina Parkway that I think brings in about 330. We have some other projects that they're looking at. So, park development fees are what we use. We can't use, we typically don't use general fund money to do things like soccer fields and those type of projects. And I, I think this, in fact, I know in closed session, we, we had some support, a lot of support to move forward with the Orangewood Park Facility. I think you'll see it come to the agenda in the next, probably, within the next two months. We, we had a study done a couple of years ago, as some of you know. So, I will say that soccer is on the front and center of the City Council, and we look forward to having a professional soccer facility in town. We do have one soccer field at Big League Dreams, but that's run by Big League Dreams, and they have soccer leagues there. So, anyway, I want to thank all the soccer people for coming out, and your timing is good. We will be looking at the soccer field.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Just to answer Shirley, I like to think that I'm pretty approachable and accessible. So, I wouldn't mind sharing who I am, what I do, where I came from, what views I have with anybody in the audience or anybody that's listening. Just reach out. You can either, you can find me online. If you type in my name plus West Covina, you'll probably find my company on there pretty quickly. You can either call City Hall and send me an email or call my office. But, I'm sorry if there was any, missed, not enough information out there about me, but I'm glad to answer anything for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sotelo.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank soccer for coming out tonight. It's great you guys showed us who you are. You guys, it's been a long time since you guys needed a field. I've been working with you guys for a while. I talked to Art, and we got this new funding that came up, and I think it's gonna work. I think for, for first time, we have a place, we have a design, and we, first time we have the funds. So, we're, our council's supporting you guys, and now you guys are getting to go home. Thank you guys for showing us. Thank you for coming.
Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I haven't been as long as, involved in the city activities as long as the Mayor Pro Tem and Sotelo, but I first discovered the soccer league back in 2006. And I am absolutely ecstatic that they've collectively come here tonight and going forward. That's what we need to continue to do, because work does pay off. That's how I got elected. Thank you.
With that, we will move on to our consent calendar, and I can honestly say, as a mother of four boys, I know how important it is to have their sports and to have a safe place for them to play, and how much it means to the families. And it means a lot to me, as a West Covina resident, to see families care about their children and want West Covina be that place. So, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. So, with that, thank you. I don't, I don't mean to be hurrying everybody. It's, we have, I, I'm so grateful you guys are here, but I know with kids, you want to probably get here and get out here the decisions. So, the next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. If no one has anything that they need to pull, a motion is in order.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on the consent. Thank you so much on that. Our next item is our, we have a appeal hearing, item number 12. So, just one moment, we'll get all our paperwork, and to give everybody an opportunity that may want to step out. Again, thank you so much for coming. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started on the Public Appeal of Planning Commission Decision Subcommittee for Design Review Number 12-03, South Dryden Lane. This matter set for public hearing was continued from the June 18, 2012, 13 meeting, and consists of an appeal of the Planning Commission denial of the Subcommittee for Design Review Number 12-03 to build a 1,487 square foot, one-story, single-family residence on a parcel that is adjacent to the Summer Place Village condominium complex. The property is located within the single-family residential R1 zone. And at this time, I shall open the public hearing of the Appeal of the Subcommittee for Design Review 12-03. There will first be the presentation of our staff report, and then we shall hear from those in favor of the appeal, and then those opposed to the appeal. Finally, those in favor of the appeal will have the opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony received in opposition. Mr. Chung, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will present the staff report tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant, Mr. Leonard Radomski, is requesting approval to construct a 1,487 square foot, one-story, single-family house on a parcel that is adjacent to Summer Place Village condominium complex. The streets within the comp, the condominium complex are public streets. This item has been continued from the council meeting of June 18, 2013. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that, behind you, behind me, you'll see the aerial of the area, and let me take a moment to point out some of the issues of the area. This is Summer Place Village condominium complex, and this is the single-family to the north. There are a series of three lots here, which I will cover. This is the subject property. There are two other common space lots owned by Summer Place Villas that are in that area. And just to get bearing, this is Volinda, and Amar is, is down this way just a bit. The subject property is a 7,000-square-foot, irregularly-shaped lot that spans both sides of this end of South Dryden Lane. The applicant is proposing to construct the house on the eastern side of Dryden Lane. The larger portion of the property is on the eastern side, and that's what you're looking at here in this photo, is the larger portion on the eastern side of Dryden. The western portion of the property, which you can see there, is, is much narrower. Basically, this area here. According to records, the track map that created Summer Place Village condominium complex was recorded in 1973. The track map that created the single-family subdivision to the north was recorded in 1977. The subject partial, parcel was originally part of the track map for the single-family residences to the north. So, it was subdivided with these houses up here, as well as these two lots, whereas these ones were done in 1973. A perimeter wall is located to the north of the three parcels, separating the condo complex from the single-family residences to the north. Although the three parcels were created in conjunction with the tract for the single-family residences to the north, they were developed and used as open space with walkways, lighting, landscaping, including mature trees. And you can see that on the photos. The two other parcels that I pointed out are currently used as a tennis court and another open space lot in the northwesterly part of the complex, and they are owned by Summer Place Village Homewards Association. It is unclear why the Homewards Association for the condo complex does not own the subject parcel. There are four condo units in the neighboring building that open onto the subject property. So, what you're looking at here in this green space is the area where the house is proposed to be built. The property owner acquired the subject property from the Los Angeles County tax collector at a public auction in 2011. In January of this year, the owner erected a chain-link fence around the portion of the property where he's proposing to build the single-family house. The proposed single-family house requires approval by the Planning Commission Subcommittee for Design Review. The Subcommittee review, reviewed the proposal on January 22, 2013, and determined to forward the proposal to the Planning Commission for review, and to notify the owners and occupants within the Summer Place Village condominium complex. The Planning Commission reviewed the request on February 12, 2013. At that meeting, there were approximately 35 people in attendance, many of whom live or in or associated with the Summer Place Village condominium complex. The majority of these speakers spoke in opposition. The commissioners discussed the proposed house, history of the use of the parcel as an open space, the desire to see the mutual agreement on the sale of the property to the Homewards Association, and the compliance of the proposed house with all applicable zoning standards. At the conclusion of the review, the commission voted four to one to deny the request. The majority of the commissioners determined that the house would be out of character and not visually harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. The dissenting voter stated that the proposed single-family residence was in compliance with all applicable zoning standards, and that the applicant was the legal owner of the subject property. The applicant is requesting approval of a single-family house on Dryden Lane. He has indicated that if he receives approval to construct the house, he will be willing to continue to allow the Homewards Association an opportunity to submit an offer to purchase the property for a period of six months following the approval. The recommendation is to uphold the Planning Commission decision to deny Subcommittee for Design Review 1203. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions of staff by council? Mayor Pro Tem Herford.
Jeff, I went out to the site. It's a real tiny property. That tree that looks like it's up against the sidewalk is actually right in the middle. It's a large pine tree, and then some of the trees to the back look like they're mature trees. I assume there's probably something for a tree removal. Is that, are we at that stage or not yet?
There would probably be at least one tree removal required, because it's in the front yard setback. The rest of them, because they're not significant trees in terms of oaks or sycamores, then they're not, they wouldn't require a tree removal permit.
Okay, and it looked to me like there had, if, if the council was to approve this, the sidewalk would have to be redone. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and whose cost would that be?
The applicant is intending to redo the sidewalk as he, as he, because the sidewalk now is on what would be his property.
Okay. Oh, that's right. The sidewalk's on his property.
That portion, I think, the portion that bows out there.
Okay.
He is.
In the back.
And there's a, there's some portion on the front, too, up against the street, I believe, that also encroaches onto his property.
And I assume that since we're here tonight, the negotiations did not achieve-
That is correct.
-some type of an agreement. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move forward. We then have our speaker cards, which I will begin with those in favor of the appeal. So, I have Robert Murray.
I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if I got it right. I marked it right. What does in favor of the appeal mean?
Support the Planning-
Right. You support the Planning Commission's appeal to deny the project. So, you would be in opposition to, you would be of the Planning Commission's appeal. Okay, what this is, is they're appealing, it's the developers, or the owners, appealing the Planning Commission's decision.
Oh, I marked it wrong.
This is the time when you speak, you're, you're in favor. Yes. City Attorney can probably explain better than me.
The applicant to build the house has appealed the denial. So, if you're in favor of the appeal, you would want the house to be built. If you oppose the appeal, that is to deny the construction of the house.
Okay, that's, yeah.
You want to deny the construction?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so then that, you'll come, I'll put you in the other staff.
Okay.
I think it would be appropriate to allow the appellant to speak first.
Correct. Well, that, that was marked in favor.
Yeah, it was. I, I mismarked it. I apologize for that.
So, opposed is, you're opposed to the house being built.
I mean, not, not just the people. I mean, I think we should hear from Mr. Radomski first.
Oh, absolutely. Well, that, I just called the card that says it was in favor, so, okay. Leonard Radomski.
I'm actually Michael Chulak, Mr. Radomski's attorney, and I did submit a card. Madam Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Reverend Radomski is the owner of the subject property. As you know, he bought it, paid for it. It is zoned for one house. It has always been zoned for one house since it has been zoned. He's not asking for any change in the zoning. He is not asking for any variances. He wants one thing. He wants to build one, single-family house. And that's what the application requests. Next door to the property, the subject property, as you know, there is a condominium association. The condominium association has a board of directors. They have hired an attorney. They have been using the property for a number of years, notwithstanding the fact that they do not own the property. They have been using it. So, they've been using somebody else's property. Mr. Radomski now owns the property and would like to use his property. The association, through its board, through their attorney, wants that property. They want to use it, but they want to own it. They have attempted to buy it. They have made offers to buy it. They want to pay pennies on the dollar. They have attempted to make an offer that Mr. Radomski could not refuse, but he did refuse it. He's not gonna sell it to them. He wants to build a house on it. Now, today, there are going to be a number of people here in opposition. They don't want Mr. Radomski to build a house. They don't want to build it. They're being somewhat disingenuous, I believe, because they want to buy it, and they want to pay a small price. And I believe what they want is for the government, the city, to do the dirty work, to turn this property into a valueless piece of property, so that they can buy it and they can use it. I want you to imagine for a moment that you bought the property. I want you to imagine for a moment that you took money out of your retirement fund. You paid for it, you bought it. It was zoned for one house, and you applied to build one house. And I want you to assume for a moment that the government says, "No, you can't build the house." The property has no value. It's worse than not having any value. It's worse than having the property taken by the government. Imagine having a piece of property where you can't use it, you can't build on it, but you can pay taxes on it in perpetuity. You can pay insurance on it in perpetuity. You can have a fence around it in perpetuity. You can cut the lawn and pull the weeds and do all of these things in perpetuity, but you can't use it. The property then has no value except to them, and they want it. And they have made it very clear, because they have offered to buy it at pennies on the dollar. Now, if Mr. Radomski was asking for something out of the ordinary, a zoning change, a variance, he was asking to do something highly unusual, I could understand why people may be opposed. This is a one-story- This is a one-story, brand-new house on a lot, in a residential neighborhood, access through a public street. It's just a nice new house, or it will be a nice new house if it is permitted to be built. So I hope that the council will take into consideration the objectivity or the lack of objectivity when people complain about the house that is intended to be built. Mr. Radomski is an American citizen. In America, at least so far, you're allowed to use your property. You have to use it legally. There are laws, we know, zoning laws, other regulations. Mr. Radomski is a pastor. He understands you have to obey the law. And he will obey the law. He is expecting to do everything that is required by the city and by the state when the house is built or if the house is built. And that's all he wants to do, is he wants to be able to use the property that he paid for. He does not want to be forced to sell it to the one neighbor that is dying to get their hands on it. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I have several other cards that are not marked, so I'm going to call your name because I don't know if they're in favor of the building or opposed. Rachel Apodaca?
Opposed.
Michael Chulak?
That's me, Michael Chulak.
Ah, got it, okay. So we have Leonard and Michael. Okay, so I'll keep you here because you'll be coming back forward. Diana Okura? And Seal Weinstock. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilman...
Just a clarification. This was sold in a tax sale, I guess? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Who paid the taxes on it before it went to the tax sale?
As I understand it, there was another buyer previously, a few years before, who bought it at auction and then didn't pay taxes and lost it, and so it was purchased by Mr. Radomski. But before that, I don't think it had been up for tax sale until sometime in the mid 2000s.
You know, you hear these stories of people that use somebody's land for years and years and years, and then it's deemed some type of a property right. Maybe the attorney can ask this. Is that something that comes into play here?
You know, I don't know the facts of the case, but what you're referring to is adverse possession.
Right.
And you can obtain, you know, a fee title through adverse possession. You have to meet, I believe, it's like five criteria. And you have to prove all those five criteria in order to obtain title and you have to go through court...typically, you have to go through court proceedings to do that.
Next, we'll move forward with in opposition. Seal Weinstock.
Thank you for hearing us. I've lived in Summer Place Complex since 1986. The grounds that they're talking about are inside our brick wall, under the assumption always that it belonged to us because when the builder built it, he built the brick wall around it. There's one entrance in and out of the complex, totally. The area he's talking about would block the houses, like they showed you in the picture, of all the homeowners that purchased that thing, grounds, house, thinking they had the land in front of it as a view. A brick wall or some type of boundary would be put up. It'd be a white elephant, as to say, in our complex that are all townhomes. There's...he bought it for $2,000, okay, in the tax sale. He...it's just unbelievable that someone...his son had stated at the last meeting, he wanted $100,000 for land you bought for $2,000 that you can naturally assume belonged to the complex. It's just unthinkable that someone would want to rip off everyday, hard-working people to build a house there. And don't tell me these people that rent or whoever are not going to try to use all the association amenities. We have tennis courts, we have pools, we have everything. Everyone bought thinking this was a private Summer Place Townhome. We've been playing dues, we've been keeping those grounds up. Just because the builder, when he built it, did not include that property somehow, I don't think we should be penalized, totally. I mean, I just think it's very unfair. We're a family there. Most of us have lived there many, many, many years. I'm there since '86. Diane Exotamy was one of the first homebuyers. There's 111 units. We all stick together. If there's a problem, we stick together. We call the police. We had problems with drugs, we called the police, we had other problems. Everyone knows our complex is safe and we're a complex. We're home. That would be a total disrespect to us, I guess, is the only word I can think of, putting that in there. And that's all I have to say. I mean, it's just heartbreaking to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Diana Okura.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Like Seal said, I've lived there since 1976. I was a young wife and a mother when I first moved in. Obviously, I'm not a young woman anymore. I bought, or my husband and I bought there because there were so many open areas and young trees, now they're older trees, and there are a lot of walkways and green areas. And you saw the one on the slide that was shown. And the four townhomes that are there had that green area to look out on. Now there's a chain link fence and the area has not been cared for. We had, I believe, the association asked him to care for it. It's weeds now and we've continued to water it because we at least want to see green. But the people that live there, their doors face that area. One of them has a bedroom that faces that area. And now they'll be looking at either a wall or the side of a house. And it is in the complex. We didn't know we didn't own that land because that wall was built. We stupidly, maybe, assumed the land was ours because it was inside our complex. And we didn't know any better. I don't know if that's our fault or not, but if you have a space inside a wall that surrounds your community, what else are you to think? And taxes had always been paid. We do have a tennis court and a basketball court and a swimming pool. These areas are maintained for the people that live in our community and we're free to use them because we have homeowner dues. That house will not be subject to these dues. And so the people that live there will not be allowed to use them. The people that live in that house will not be welcome, I'm sorry to say. We have a wonderful community. It's multicultural. It's where I want to live. It's where my children grew up and now my grandchildren, when they come to visit. I love to walk with my kids, my grandkids, my dog. And when I see that chain link fence, it's an eyesore. I don't want a house built in our community. It's not a place for houses. We chose to live in a townhome for particular reasons. Everybody has their own, but I am definitely opposed to it. I hope you'll see our side. And by the way, I think there were more of us that wanted to speak, but there were no more cards out there. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Rachel Apodaca?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Like Seal and Diane before me, I've also lived in the complex 18 years. I've raised my daughter there. We've had wonderful times at the pool, at the tennis courts. We use the facility. We walk. My neighbors walk their dogs every day. Everyone comments on the fence every day when I see them walking. It is an eyesore. It is impossible to actually build a house there if you actually walk that small piece of land. The neighbors that are adjacent to it, their walkway would end and the...this man's here, property starts. So they have nothing in front of them. It would be like a tenement. There's only one entrance into our complex, one entrance outside of our complex. There's only one way in, one way out. It's a dead end. In order for him to live in our community, he'd have to drive in through there, drive through the whole complex, and it's the last piece of parcel. It is enclosed by a 10-foot brick wall. It has always been thought of as part of our community. We did not pay taxes on that. I believe it was the person who developed the area, they paid taxes. It was probably sent over time and time again. They finally passed away. No one claimed the property. It became property of the government and it was sold for taxes. $2,000 is not a great investment. It is not a commitment. And it may be legal, but it is not right. It is not right for our community and it is not right for him to make a claim to charge us that much money. It's like putting us over a barrel. It's highway robbery. It's not right in any shape, way, or form. We don't see it's right. We've made offers to the gentleman. I'm sure our attorneys have made adequate offers, but it's not enough. It may never be enough. And God bless the man that's a reverend, but that is greed and it's just not acceptable to our homeowners. I lived there. I lived there 18 years. I've raised my daughter. I'm going to live there and retire there as well as the other neighbors I have. And it's disingenuous? Yes, it is on their part, but not on the homeowners. We live there. It's our home. It's where we raise our children. It's where we're going to retire. And it would be a shame to allow this man in our community, and he is definitely not welcomed. So please, vote for us. Planning Committee voted it down for a reason. A couple of the members did actually drive out there and look at the area. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Robert Murray.
Good evening. Good evening, once again, council members, audience. I live on Dryden Lane and I'm here tonight to let you know that I would like the City Council to uphold the denial for application to build the property, a single-family home amongst townhomes, a public unit development that we bought into. We bought into that public unit development thinking we were buying into the community to stay that way. And now we have someone trying to build an odd dwelling in amongst our townhome development, which doesn't look right. So I simply ask the council and the mayor and everybody involved here to just do what's right. Put yourself...imagine yourself buying into this unit, this complex, and having something like this brought into the place where you live. Just please do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ernesto Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members and audience here. Just want to mention, last time everyone met, the vote was four to one, okay? And the person that supported the buyer said, why would a person want to live where he's not welcome? And...and the thought is, he's not planning on moving in there. He's planning on building a home so he can make more profit out of it. That's all his goal is. He's not concerned about the loss of our property value, which will give us a property loss on our value. So this is one of those situations that the law doesn't address. The law doesn't work in this situation. There should be a law at these property auctions that state...they should have told them the whole situation about this property. They should have told them, you know what? This is an established community. You're probably not going to be able to build a home there unless you're going to build something to beautify the community. Because like everyone says, how this happened, we do not know. If we would have known that that wasn't our property and they would have called us and said, hey, you guys need to buy it, our association would have bought it, hands down, with no problem whatsoever. But because the law fails us and the law fails him, we are at the mercy of you, the council. And what you as a council need to decide is whether the law is going to benefit one person for profit or the larger community. One person to make more money or the whole community having their property value go down. And common sense says you're going to side with the larger community. If it was your community, your property value going down, I would say more than likely, as a matter of fact, you would oppose this if this was your community. So I just hope you guys make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Susanna Keno.
I've lived at Summer Place Village since 1987. I particularly moved in there because I was a single parent with a two-and-a-half-year-old child, and I love the fact it has greenery everywhere. That is one of the major factors for most people moving into that particular complex is that it is beautiful and green and has more trees than you could possibly ever imagine, despite the fact we've had to remove quite a few. The property is obviously was a mistake, that it was never part of our community. We have researched it. It was a mistake on the developer's part. And common sense says we shouldn't have to pay for it as the homeowners. A single-family unit is just inappropriate. If the gentleman, Mr. Radomski, wants to live in our complex, I think he should buy a unit in the complex, not build something else. That way, he is a member of our community and would be understanding where we're coming from. We understand what he wants to do and that he has a right to it, doesn't make it right. And that's simply our viewpoint. It's not right that we have to pay a price for a mistake that none of us knew about until 2011. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosa Gardner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rosa Gardner and I'm part of the Summer Place Village community. And I would like to ask you to please deny this project. It was stated that we were disingenuine, which is not true, that we were using that property...we were using the property, which is not true, because when you go into the community, you see this little space you think is a barbecue area. So you're going to picnic, you're going to barbecue, you're going to relax on it. The homeowners association has been cutting the grass for the last 20-something years that I've been there. So we're not using anything that we haven't taken care of. And another thing, I went by there, this gentleman has it fenced off like a little mini-prison and he's not even taking care of the grass. So if he wants to prove to us that he's going to take care of the property, I think he should start now. If he builds this house, which is going to be pretty small, anyone can move in there. I guarantee you, he is not going to put his family in a Crackerjack box. I guarantee you that. Because I wouldn't do it. I would build it for property of renting it, but I would not put my family there because it's too small. It's not...it looks like a little mini-dog run. I don't know if any of you guys have been out there to see that property, but you would not believe what he wants to put on that property. $1,487 square foot house on a dog run? I don't believe that. And he is not going to live there. I guarantee you that. If he builds that house, he can do whatever he wants to on that property. He does not have to pay any type of dues like we do. I paid $290. What is he going to pay? Nothing. But he can use...and I guarantee you, whoever he rents or lives there will use our tennis court, will use our swimming pool. Oh, yes, they will. Oh, yes, they will. So being disingenuine? No, that isn't fair to even use those words to us. And I'm not begging you, but I am asking you to, please, do not allow... And I'm not begging you, but I am asking you to, please, do not allow this. I am 68 years old, and I'd be doggone if I want to live in a place where you don't know who's moving in. Everybody in here is over 35 to 60, I guarantee you that, that lives over them complexes. Because like one lady said, her daughter's 20-something years old, so she's not a teenager. It's very peaceful, very nice, very quiet, extremely safe. You can go out at 12 o'clock at night and just listen to nothing. You ever go outside at 12 o'clock at night and just listen to nothing? And it sounds great. You wake up at 5:00 in the morning and open your door, and what do you hear? Nothing. And it's good. I love nothing. Not really, but I like to, I don't like to hear nothing, you know? A lot of times, you just don't want to hear people's voices. You don't want to hear, you don't want to hear anything, just peace and quiet. And sometimes, that's noisy, when it's too quiet. But I ask you to please, please consider, do not allow this. We're the ones that have to pay the piper, not you guys. Because once you allow this to happen, this guy can run amok, and there's nothing we can do about it. Nothing. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ammerson.
I'm also one of the owners of Summer Place Village. It was my first home purchase. I was born in the city of West Carolina. I've lived here the whole time, so do my parents. The property is obviously, you say it's adjacent, but it's in Summer Place Village. It is zoned for a single-family residence, that is true, but as I said, it was meant for the property on the other side of the brick wall where the single-family homes are. If he wants to build a single-family home, then it should be on the other side of the wall where it's zoned and where it matches what was done. Obviously, the brick wall was put in the wrong place, and for whatever reason, we never owned it. Our property taxes are pooled. We don't know. We pay for us, for our unit, plus this common areas. We don't know which ones are common and which ones aren't. We assume, because it's in that brick wall, that we've been paying on it this whole time. And if it went up for auction, then why weren't we allowed to buy it? I don't know all the rules to that, but I know that we weren't made aware of it. We didn't know. We assumed it was ours. Maybe that's a mistake. We don't know what's going on there. They've made attempts to buy it. His price is $140,000. That was just discussed last week. $140,000 for something he paid less than three grand. You're asking 111 people to pay him and split that up at $140,000. It's almost impossible. People work to pay their bills and to pay, put food on the table, and now you're asking him to come up with an expense for something we didn't know was there or existed. There's only one way into our complex and one way out, and we'd like to keep it that way and keep it to where it's just the townhouses. If it's zoned for a single-family, it's because it was a mistake. It's not our fault, and we'd like to keep it the way it is. It's green grass. We've been taking care of it since the complex was built. It's been mowed, and the fence didn't go up until right before this meeting in February of this year. He owned it since 2011, they said, and he didn't do anything with it. Didn't even put up a fence. He let us take care of it. We didn't know it. And it's been no change until right before we came to the city meeting back in January, February. And we'd just like to see that it's denied, and if he wants to take what we can offer him, what we can honestly afford, we're more than happy to buy it. But we can't afford what he's offering to sell it for. And that's where we're at. We'd like to see it stay the way it is and green grass, and maybe the fence come down so people don't have to look at a fence. But other than that, we're just asking more or less for you to deny the request and let us move on, hopefully. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Sykes.
As Mr. Hereford talked about, we also went and visited the condo complex. I can tell you, all the different condo complexes in West Carolina, it's one of the nicer ones I've seen. It's very well-kept up, and you literally have to drive all the way through the complex to get to this property parcel. How would you like it if someone put a house right on top of yours? And the only reason why he wants approval is so he can hold the homeowners' association over the fire and pay the price that he wants. That's all this is about. He's not going to live there. And for a man of cloth, you would think he would be more giving instead of taking away. You know, the condo complex has been putting, has grass on it, has lighting, has the water services already there. Is he going to pay them for all that they've been taking care of that property for? It's one thing he won't have to do if he builds a house there, because it's already there. That's not fair to these homeowners. We're all homeowners up here. How would you like it if your home was invaded? Because that's what I feel like this condo complex is. When I saw that property, I just looked like, "How the heck is he going to put a house on it?" It's impossible. And more importantly, why would he want to do that to a condo complex? It's not fair to them, and it's definitely not fair, because they're all residents, just like we are. They deserve a city council that stands behind them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Herb Redholtz.
Good evening, once again, Mayor Sanderson and council members and everybody here. What you have in front of you tonight, this is a textbook case of something that is out of character with the neighborhood. Wanting to put a single-family house in the middle of a townhome community is, just makes no sense. You know, as you know, I don't live there, but I have sympathy with these residents of this community who, if this goes through, are going to see their quality of life trampled upon. This is not what they signed up for. This is not what they bargained for. And I'll tell you what, you're not reinventing the wheel here. The planning commission heard and listened to both sides and made the correct decision. It has been done time and time again to deny a project based on the fact that it doesn't fit the area. And this council, time and time again, has upheld that decision. So this is not reinventing the wheel. This is nothing new. The applicant has stated that, "Hey, you give me the approval, no problem. I'll continue to negotiate with the homeowners." Well, of course he will. He'll be holding all the cards. He'll have the legal right to own that property and do what he wants. To me, it's tantamount to extortion at that point. He's like the previous speaker said, it's like holding a gun to his head. You, the planning commission, listened and did the right thing. They stood up for the property owners, for the residents of that neighborhood, because that is their neighborhood. That's where they live. They've invested their time, their sweat, their money to make that community what it is today. You, as elected officials, in my view, need to stand up and support that neighborhood, support those residents. Those are your residents, as you heard, they've all been there forever. Those are your residents. Those are your taxpayers, and you know what? They're your voters. If I were you, I would stand up for them. You heard all the speakers in favor. Oh, wait, there weren't any, except the applicant. But you're hearing your residents coming and telling you, "Help us. Stand up for us. Protect our neighborhood. Protect our quality of life. Do the right thing like the planning commission did, because it will be remembered if you don't." Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Vicki Lyons.
I'm afraid my voice is just not very good tonight, and I had my little speech written out. But I think what you're hearing over and over again is how important our community, our townhouse complex, is to us. To keep the continuity, not have a single-family dwelling that could be painted any color, any style. If you go into our complex, it's the same style, it's the same color, even down to our garage doors and our fences. The other problem, I think, is our liability in our common areas. They're lovely. There's grassy knolls, there's huge trees. As long as this house is going to be, where is this person's family or animals or whatever going to be out to play in our common areas? It's not a public park. We pay the liability and we maintain it. So I ask that you think about how you'd feel if someone was coming into your neighborhood and changing it in such a great way. But anyway, thank you, and we hope your support, not allowing it to be built. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sherri Sammons.
First thing I wanted to start with is that I know you saw some pictures of our property and how beautifully manicured it is. And if you would, I would like to let you pass this around. This was taken last night about this time. This is the property and what it looks like right now. It's not well-manicured or taken care of like what you saw in the pictures before. Amongst all the other things that have been said tonight, I agree wholeheartedly. I've been there for almost 20 years now. I walk every morning, and I see that. It's an eyesore. It's a difficulty to see, but in many ways, it's been a rallying point for our group. The minute that fence went up, we got angry. And so it's been a good rallying point. Some of the points that have not been brought out so far also is the difficulty that this house is going to place on our parking, all right? This is on a cul-de-sac, and we have, a lot of our residents park on the streets because of the fact that their garages are being used for storage and other things. We would have a difficult time with the parking on Wednesdays for our trash day. Our people put their trash in the alleyways behind the garages, and the trash trucks go through the alleys. This house would not be able to do that. It would have to be out on the street. And for the trash truck to maneuver while there's cars parked on that cul-de-sac would be very difficult. We also have, on Thursdays, every Thursday, we have street sweeping day. And we have a difficult time, but we manage, most of us, to squeeze into the guest parking or behind our garages, or in our garages, to be able to get off of those streets so that we can then be away from the street sweeping and allow them to do their job. If these people are not able to park in their driveway or in their garage, they're going to be trying to park behind our garages and in our parking spaces as well, in the guest parking. It's going to make it difficult. Also, it's a double whammy when we have trash day and street sweeping day happen to land on the same day for, for one reason, a holiday or whatever. It's really maddening in there, and for the trash trucks to try to get through, it's crazy. The other thing that's also part of the problem is the mail delivery. We have boxes set up, we have three boxes set up in our community where all of our people get their mail. These people would have to have a special mailbox right in front of their place. Mailman getting in and out of there is going to be difficult as well. So there's other considerations besides the fact that it would be a person that we wouldn't know. We've been told through the time that we've been in negotiations here that this would be Mr. Radomski's retirement home, and then the planning commission meeting, we were told that it was going to be a rental, and now we were told on Monday night it would be sold to the people. So we don't know what's going to happen as far as this house is concerned, and who's going to be in it, and what's going to be happening there. I please, hopefully, that you will be thinking about these things and that you will be thinking that we need to object and not have this house built here. There's just too many problems that are going to be accrued because of this house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Pamela Abbott-Moore.
Thank you for your time. I cannot possibly add anything to what the homeowners have been saying. I am the attorney for the association, and I can tell you that the members were utterly shocked. And I think shocked is actually an understatement when they learned that there had been a tax sale and that this parcel of land had been sold to an outsider. The members receive a tax bill for their property, and it has different items broken down on it, and it includes all of the common areas. We do not get separate tax bills, and I think that's important for the council to understand. We've been accused of not paying these taxes. It has been said, "Well, why didn't you buy it at the tax sale?" We had no idea this was going on. Each owner pays 111th, say that 10 times fast, of the common area taxes, expenses, everything else. So we had no idea this was not part of the property. You've been to the property, you've seen it. There's a wall around it. All of the roads, they may be public, but you go into the community, you have to go through the community to get to this. It was stated tonight that we've been using somebody else's property, that we're disingenuous. I am shocked by those statements. We have cared for that property for 35 years. These owners have cared for that property. They've watered it, they've manicured the trees, they've removed diseased trees. They have done everything thinking it was their property. If you look at a tract map for this community, it looks like this is part of it. There's just no question. Nobody would dream. And actually, when we heard that this had happened, we were shocked, and we fought it and said, "No, this is part of our community." We thought that it was, and I believe the city thought that it was part of the community as well. This property sold for $2,000 at a tax sale. This is an investor. I know that as a profession, he is a reverend, but he is also an investor of real estate. And as an investor, you know that when you buy the tax sale, you take the property as you find it. And this is not adjacent to our community. It is smack dab in our community, and anybody going out and looking at this property in advance of the tax sale would know this is not a parcel that is fit for a single-family home. And we would ask you to uphold the earlier decision. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kristenda Robinson.
I am one of the homeowners that live directly in front of the unit. I'm 1907 Dryden Lane. Mr. Radomski approached my husband one afternoon stating, "Oh, I bought this property right here." And my husband said, "Okay." He said, "The property right here." My husband had no idea that he was speaking of the grass right in front of our home. He thought he was speaking across the fence. Now, when you purchase a home, any one of you, when you go out, you look, there's certain things that catch your eye, that you like, that you enjoy, that you see. I've lived there, my husband and I, for 25 years. I was expecting my youngest daughter when we moved there. The greenery, the area caught our eye. The community in itself, we are small, but we are a family. No one, Mr. Radomski, is trying to knock your American dream. You can have that, but not in Summer Place. I ask, please, that you guys not allow this project to move forward. We don't want to knock this gentleman for all that he's done. I mean, everybody has a right to purchase and do what they want to do in life, but for what we have there, it means a lot to us. And for us to not even know that the property was for sale, no one approached us. I've lived there. No one has said anything. So now, we are slapped on the wrist because we didn't know, and, "Oh, you don't care?" My house, where I live, last spring, since he has purchased the property, one of the trees fell on my house. So since he is the owner, we should have sent him the bill, okay? Scaring my family to death, my grandson, you know? It's very unfair. So I please ask, please reconsider. We are a family. We're not knocking your dream, Mr. Radomski, but we at Summer Place, we don't want you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alex Lung. Our next speaker is Alex Lung.
Good evening, Mayor, and everyone else. I just want to let you know that me and my mom, we moved to 1917 South Dryden Lane in 2010. And before then, we used to live in Monterey Park. And from what I see in that area, I noticed that there are sometimes houses that are just, doesn't even look right, doesn't even belong there, but apparently they built it anyways. It's like, one is like a one level, next one will be a two level, one level, and then like, it's gonna be like all weird. But like, I mean, when I moved to Summer Place with my mom, I actually enjoy how, looking at all the houses, it looks all the same. It looks wonderful, it looks very conform. And I actually wish that it would actually stay like that. I mean, it looks just really great. And I actually enjoy walking my dog along the side where apparently his property is, I guess. But I mean, like, I just enjoy walking my dog and seeing how green it is, seeing the trees, seeing nature. And that even though, you know, nature doesn't really have much of a value, but it has like some value that you can't really put a price on it. It's like, and I also used to be a boy scout also. I used to go to certain, like Shabans Park, to camp there, to look at nature. I used to, went to a different park to help build stairs. And I just enjoy being there, being in nature with no price on it, just to see how beautiful it is. And I'm pretty sure my community that I live with, they would actually still enjoy, you know, seeing the greenery, seeing what they've, you know, they've been there for so many years. And it would just be a shame that if someone, like, no offense to him, that he would just want to build a single-family home just out of nowhere and totally just destroy how beautiful nature is. And I would really strongly suggest that all you would actually deny is building his home, or building, not his home, but building a home in that property where it just ruins everyone's eyesight. I mean, it doesn't even look right. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Francie Yip.
Hello, good evening. I live on 1905 South Dryden Lane, and my front door opens to that land that we're talking about. Back in 2009, when my real estate agent took me to this property, the first thing that I noticed was the grounds, the greenery and the trees, and the smell of the trees. I instantly felt right at home. That was the attraction for me to purchase that home. And I just can't believe that's going to be taken away from me. That was why I purchased the home, and that why is going to be taken away from me. Sitting where you are right now, looking at me, that's where my front door is, and this is where the property is, right here. If he builds that home, when I open that door, right, when you open your front door, you'll be looking at this house, this strange house that doesn't look like anything, it shouldn't belong there, it doesn't look like anything similar or in harmony with the whole area. I don't know if you've ever been to this property, but as you drive in, there's a wall that surrounds the whole condo community. So there's no way that you wouldn't think that's part of our property. I'm just surprised that when they purchased the property, when they went over there, they didn't think to themselves, like, wait a minute, this doesn't look right, this belongs to the condo community. You know, that he should have contacted us and tried to work something out, and he didn't do that because he had a plan. His plan was to just make money. For all of us, it's our home, it's really our livelihood, our property's value's going to go down, the property tax will go down, so that your revenue will go down as well for the city of West Covina. So please consider to deny his appeal. Thank you for your time.
Now, that is all the yellow speaker cards I have. I know we are out of cards, I apologize. So if anyone would like to speak at this time, please come forward. Okay, I think that that concludes those in opposition to this appeal. And at this time, I'd like to call forward Michael Chulak, if he'd like to come forward, for any rebuttal to the testimony received this evening.
Thank you. I will try to be brief because I know it's late. Number one, the subject property is not inside their complex. The subject property is a lot. It has its own dimensions, it has its own zoning, it is adjacent to the condominium development, but it is not inside. It is accessed by means of a public street. The lot is at the end of the public street. I would also like to point out that when someone buys a home, including a condominium, almost always, they get a title policy. When you get a title policy for a condominium, you get a legal description of your unit, which is a lot of words, but there is a plot, plan of the common area. That's on your title policy. It is oftentimes attached to your deed. Now, sometimes people don't read it, that happens all the time, but when you look at this condominium and you recognize the fact that the subject property is not part of it from a legal standpoint, you have to understand that people that received a title policy when they bought their home should have been able to look at it and see very clearly, they didn't get the property next door. And they didn't get the property next door. When you buy a property, any property, all of us, and there is vacant property next to you, everyone, almost everybody, recognizes that somebody is going to build on that property at some point in the future. And what you have here is you have a lot, which is the condominium, the parcel, and you have a separate lot next to it. It's absolutely foreseeable that somebody is going to build a home on a single-family lot. I heard expressed fear that the person buying this property would use the amenities. Well, of course, they would have no right to use the amenities. Every condominium that is not gated must be careful about who uses the property. This property is no different. The owner of this home, assuming somebody lives in this home in the future, will have no right to use the home, they will understand that. And if they were to use the facilities, they would be trespassing, they'd be breaking the law. I heard that the person who would buy this home would be unwelcome. Heard that more than once. I heard that there is a fear of who might live in this house. That doesn't make any sense. Anytime anybody moves in next door, whether it's the house next door, whether it's the townhome next to you, you never know who is going to move in. There's always a risk. And so I don't see where that really is an argument that has, at least in my opinion, a great deal of weight. I heard that the property values may go down. I think the opposite is true. It's usually people that have single-family detached homes that are complaining about the townhome or the condominium that is being built next to them. A single-family home is not a lesser use, it's not a reduction in value, it is at least equal value, and it's a new house. It's not an old property. It's a new, modern property that we are talking about. I heard that the zoning was a mistake. The zoning was never a mistake. The zoning was absolutely intentional. No city, no county, no government agency makes a mistake when they zone property. They zone it intentionally. Oh, maybe in retrospect, people are not happy with the zoning, that of course happens, but it was not a mistake, it was not an error, it was an intentional decision, this is a separate parcel, it was zoned intentionally. I've heard that it was out of character to have a single-family home next to a condominium. Drive through this community, drive all over Los Angeles County, drive through any community in Southern California, and you will see thousands of condominium developments built next to detached homes. This is not anything that is unusual. This is the most common thing ever. I heard extortion being used. Pastor Radomski is not extorting anybody. All he wants to do is build a home on his own property. The issue today, as I see it, is, is there going to be a respect for the law? Are we going to count how many people are in favor? Are we going to count how many people are opposed? If it's that simple, well then, of course, the numbers are easy to count. But that's not what this is about. This is about respecting the law. It's about everybody respecting the law. It's about being able to use your property in America for a legal purpose, and that is what Mr. Radomski wants to do. Let me make sure I didn't miss anything here. I know, Mr. Radomski knows, everybody knows now, that a number of homeowners enjoyed the use of the property that is now owned by Mr. Radomski. People made mistakes. I'm sure they had no bad intentions in terms of using the property, but they used a property that never belonged to them. They were not careful in looking at their own title insurance policy when they bought their property. And now Mr. Radomski owns the property, they don't. I hear resentful comments about how much he spent, how much he's going to make, that he's an investor. This is America, you are still allowed to make a profit, I hope. And so that should be irrelevant. The law is the law, and that is what this is about, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. At this time, I will close, it doesn't have it on my script, but I close the public testimony portion of the meeting and ask for any council discussion. Mayor Protem Herford.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank all the residents and the developer also for being here tonight. I've been on the council 23 years, I've been to Summer Place Village numerous, numerous times. It's a beautiful community, well-kept condominium complex. The residents there, they take pride in ownership. It's a complex that is a condominium complex, it's not for single-family homes. The fact that this person bought this property and is trying to leverage this for whatever reason is something I can't consider, but I can consider that it's a non-conforming use, it's a house and not a condominium. So as Seal Weinstein says, they're all townhomes, condominiums. Diana Kura said it's not a place for houses, and I agree. I mean, my mom lives in a condominium complex. If somebody was to take one of the lots there and build a house in it, it would destroy the character of the neighborhood. I just can't see why somebody would buy a piece of property and expect that the residents in the complex would agree to that, or the city council that is going to make a decision on the conformity of them doing something different. So I think it's a pretty easy decision for this council to make, and I will deny the appeal tonight.
Councilmember Satella.
I was at the planning commission for over eight years, and we have rules in West Covina, and we have guidelines that we follow. And it seems we're harmonious with the neighborhood, that we don't allow a four-story house next to a one-story house, that we look at our neighbors, and when you build a house, that we sit there and you take your neighbor into consideration. I don't see how you can see this house is not in the complex. There's a wall that goes around your, that property there. There's a wall, I've been to the property. Your property goes down to two feet at the one corner, that one point. What are you going to do with that property with two feet? I mean, it goes down to just the very tip there, and it just goes right next to their sidewalk. Your property, I don't know how, this was a loophole? I cannot hold our residents hostage to this. I don't think it's fair. I wish you could work with the neighbors and get, you know, you're right, you deserve to get some money out of it. This is America. But this also is, they have the rights to live in a neighborhood where it is, there are condos there. There are no houses in that neighborhood. And I can't see where you can't say, "This is not a part of that neighborhood," because it is a part of the neighborhood, it's on this side of the wall. If you're on the other side of the wall, I could see something different, but you're on the other side of the wall. And for these people that sat there and bought property, and they thought there was a green space in front of their property, and you're saying, "Well, you didn't read your deeds properly." Okay, I agree with you, but I don't think you have the right to sit there and take away what they have. In our city of West Covina, if you were going to put another condo there, like theirs, you'd have, I think, some kind of validity, but not to put a house. And from this seat, I could not back you. I withhold the appeal. Thank you.
Councilmember McIntyre.
My heart goes out to the homeowners' association, the residents, because this is obviously a mistake. I physically went out to the site. As far as it being accommodating for a single-family house, it's clear as day that it's inside of the association. As a real estate developer, when I first heard it, I was, you know, thinking about a new resident, increasing our property tax, all those things, I was all for it on just the merits of hearing it. But once you physically go out to the site, there is without a doubt, no question that it is a part of the association. This was obviously a mistake that slipped through the cracks. The $2,000 purchase price, I'm sure the association has that in the reserves to have fixed this. So if they were aware of it, this wouldn't have been a problem. I wish you guys luck in the future dealings with this issue, but at this time, I cannot support the appeal either.
Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've all been out there and looked at this property up close and personal, and the first thing you can see, especially when you see that fence, this is very disruptive and it's divisive to a community that's been long established. And additionally, you see that it immediately shows that there's a detraction from their quality of life. And I just can't support this project because it takes away from what they're accustomed to. Thank you.
I also would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming out tonight at this late hour and being here and just participating and letting us know. and being here and, and just participating and letting us know where you're coming from and how you feel, because that is important to us as a council, so we can hear you. And I appreciate the developer, and I understand when you own a piece of property that you, you want to be able to develop that. And, and as a council, I think we need to, to keep that in mind, is what's called respect of the law. Absolutely. But I have a few questions of staff briefly before I kind of continue on where I'm coming from. There's, I looked at this site of this house that they have proposed, and there's a setback issue, because one of the corners is like right on the property line. Is that correct? I mean, it, it doesn't look like the lot ratio and was something that would work?
Well, it is, it is a very tight squeeze to get it in there. It was, it's not really set up with the, the shape that you would hope.
Right, okay. And, and that's something that caught my eye. And then a question, I don't know if you have this answer. It was talking about this property being zoned R1. What is the rest of the condo complex zone? Do you have that? Because I didn't see that.
It is zone multifamily.
Okay. Now, my question to you then would be for the city attorney. Can we legally deny this building based on out of character and visually not harmonious to the area?
Yes. If you find that it's so out of character with the surrounding structures and so forth, the architectural styles and the use of the property, our zoning code gives you that discretion.
Right. Okay. And the reason I wanted to pull that forward is, my husband's father lived there. My husband lived there in Summer Place Village, John Dryden, from the 70s. My husband and I played in those tennis courts. I'm very familiar with the property. He also played on the tennis team at Workman High School. He went to school there. He grew up there. It is a beautiful complex. And one of the things that was very appealing to his family was the green spaces and the little walkways. We had a dog, and we would walk, and a pool. And it is a community, once you drive in the first driveway. Putting a house in the back corner, I was kind of surprised that first came forward and, and how that did happen. And, and I concur with my colleagues that something was obviously missed here. And that brings up the question of this adverse possession issue. And if that is, maybe I can ask the city attorney, would that be a civil issue? That adverse, that issue?
Yes, that would be a civil issue between the, the HOA or the, the various owners of the condominium area and this lot owner.
Right. And the reason I say that is, since 19, or, what was it, 1988, when I was going there, met my husband, that property had been watered, landscaped, mowed and maintained by the association for, all that time. So, again, that's not our purview as a council to go to that. That's, I'm just mentioning that to you. But it is our purview to say if we want to support this or deny this. And I've heard from my city attorney that I am respecting the law. And I agree with my colleagues that I could not support the appeal due to the fact that this is extremely out of character for that neighborhood. So, with that, a motion is ordered to waive further reading and adopt the resolutions regarding the appeal. And this would to be uphold the planning commission's denial of the building.
Madam Mayor, on.[803.12][803.12](APPLAUSE). Call for a heading of the resolution to uphold the decision of the planning commission.
That's resolution.
Second motion.
That's resolution number 201352, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, upholding the decision of the planning commission and denying subcommittee for design review number 12-03.
You made a motion.
I made a motion.
Okay. For the, any second, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much for coming tonight.[840.24][840.24](APPLAUSE). We'll go ahead and take a brief break so that people can leave. We, and we'll get quickly right on item 13. Okay. Thank you for staying with us. As you just witnessed, we had a public hearing, and now we're going to get to do another one. This is our item number 13 under Public Hearings, General Plan Amendment 13-01. This matter is set for public hearing, consists of a proposed general plan amendment to the change in land use designation from industrial manufacturing to high residential, and proposed zone change to change the zoning designation from manufacturing to specific plan 26, Bella Vista Specific Plan for property located at 611-1623 and 1773 San Bernardino Road. Madam City Clerk, will you please verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Thank you so much. And at this time, I shall open our public hearing on the General Plan Amendment 13-01 and Zone Change 13-01. They're the same. Oh, Zone Change and Amendment Plan, okay. There will first be the presentation of the staff report. Then we shall hear from those in favor of the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change, and then opposed finally. Those in favor will have the opportunity to give rebuttal at any testimonies received. In opposition, city manager, will you, who will be presenting our staff report tonight?
Madam Mayor, members of council, it would be Jeff Anderson tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The proposal is to construct a 135-lot residential project on three existing properties at 1611, 1623, and 1773 West San Bernardino Road, and complete parking lot improvements to expand the parking at Prosperity Business Park located at 1733 West San Bernardino Road. In summary, the project is for the development of 135 residential units available, available for purchase as condominiums. The residential development is, will be four point, four six, or 6.46 acres. Units will be three and four bedrooms, ranging in size from 1,700 to 2,110 square feet. Each unit will have a two-car garage accessible from the unit. There will be 52,140 square feet of landscaped open space. Each unit will open onto a landscape area. And homeowners association will be responsible for maintaining the common facilities, such as the driveways, parking areas, open space, and all parts of the building except for the roof. This is an aerial view of the vicinity. The subject property is located on the north side of San Bernardino Road. Let me point out a couple of things to you on here. So this is subject property that's surrounded in blue. This red line represents the city's jurisdictional boundary. So, this is the city of West Covina, and here, city of Irwindale is up here, and we have some county and a corporate area off to the east. The properties to the east and the south of the property are developed as residential. So, we have a residentially-developed apartment, I'm sorry. We have a residentially-developed apartment here, including this, this. And then we have single-family residential here and here, and residential pretty much all along the south side of San Bernardino Road. The multifamily apartment complex that's adjacent has a similar density as the proposed project. And as we discussed, there are single-family uses to the east further. There are also industrial uses to the west and, and the north. So, to the west side, you have industrial uses, and to the north, and those include the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, which is here, Prosperity Business Park, which is located here. And then to the north, we have Decorative Specialties, and we have Ready Pack here. And we also have a storage facility that's this long linear. It's a one-story storage facility. The subject property is therefore a transition area between the industrial uses to the north and west and the residential uses to the east and south. You have another aerial here. This is a closer view of the subject property. You know, I'll point that out to you. There's no lines on this one. But this is Prosperity Business Park, so that gives you an idea. This is the Pix Lumber property. This is, this is Blackard's Towing. This is the backside of Prosperity Business Park. So this is the subject property, shaped like this. And again, we have the Tribune here, Prosperity Business Park, railroad tracks here with the industrial uses on the north side of the railroad tracks. We have a existing storage facility here and an apartment complex here. Across the street, you can see we have the, the school site and some residential properties. This is an aerial that shows the relationship between the subject property and the industrial properties to the north in Irwindale. And just to kind of talk through that, this is a subject property located here, railroad tracks that run along here from MetroLink. And then we have several industrial properties, including Decorative Specialties, cabinetmakers, and ready pack and other uses surrounding in that, that area. This slide indicates the proximity of existing houses to the ready pack facility to the northeast of the subject property. The residential, well, let me kind of point that out to you. So, we have this area that I believe is a county and a corporate island, but this is all residential development through here, and you have some residential development here. As well as you can see, this is the existing apartment and some residential development here. Again, apartments are two-story. This is a one-story facility, so they have visibility into this area. And about 60 feet separate parts of this building from the residential property lines in this vicinity. This aerial indicates the proximity of the existing houses to the ready pack facility to the northeast. Again, again, we're talking about, about 60 feet from here to here. These are single-family homes in the unincorporated area. This is the ready pack facility. Last slide we have of the aerials shows the roof of the ready pack facility, showing the number of refrigeration units that you can see in the refrigeration facilities throughout that. These, these lines and these, these, you can see they're up here. It appears to be an insulated and refrigerated facility to keep the produce cool while it's being processed. The processing appears to be self-contained with activity occurring inside the building. So, the subject properties are currently developed and in a blighted condition. This is, this is Blackard's. And this is how it looks right now. It's vacant. And then we have what used, what we call Pix, but really, if you look at the sign, it's Bar. Bar purchased it from Pix sometime a few years back and, and was operating it for a few years. It now is vacant. This is a site plan of the proposed development. And just to get an orientation there, this is, this is the railroad track on the north side. This is San Bernardino Road. So, north is this way. The project includes a subdivision to divide the properties into 141 lots, including 135 residential condominium lots, one lot for an existing wireless facility that will remain, and one lot for the parking lot expansion to the business park. Let me just point that out. This is the business park. This is the business park expansion. So, there will be access from here into there, just to allow more parking for the business park. Each building can claim, contains four to eight units. For the enjoyment of the residence, landscape areas are found throughout the site. The project will have a drive, the main drive entrance on San Bernardino Road, located here. And the project will be a gated development. There will be a secondary public safety access here, which will be what's commonly referred to as a crash gate, so it won't be accessible for residents to go through here. But if fire or police needs to get here for circulation or for emergency reasons, they'll be able to access it through there. For the safety of the residents and those driving on San Bernardino Road, the gates, so gated development, will be set back 170 feet from the front property line to reduce the impact of vehicles on San Bernardino Road. This design feature will reduce the impact of vehicles queuing as they enter the site. What that means is the gate will be approximately here. So, these ones, these garages will not be behind the gate, but that allows for safe egress, ingress and egress, as well as queuing as the gate, if the gate were to open. Walls and fences are proposed around the development to provide continuity within the development and to separate the proposed development from neighboring properties in San Bernardino Road. A 42-inch wrought iron fences will be constructed along San Bernardino Road to separate the residential yard from the street. And an 11-foot wall will be constructed along the northerly property line in this location, as well as an eight-foot wall along the westerly property line in this location to mitigate noise from the railroad and industrial uses to the north and west. The remaining walls will be six feet in height. The project includes the addition of 56 parking spaces in the Prosperity Business Park. The proposed design is aesthetically pleasing by providing a modern architecture that includes a variation along the building elevation and along the roof lines. Details include brick projections, recessed balconies, window projections with corbels, entry porch coverings, wood shutters, window treatment, and cornice details along the roof. I'll just point out a couple of those, just because they may not be commonly understood. These are the corbels as the, the projection, sort of like a bay window. And this is the cornices along the roof line here and here. Each unit will have a balcony on the second floor. The color schemes for the units are a variation of beige, brown, and terracotta colors. A project with similar architecture and density was constructed in the city of Alden Park recently. And these are photos of that project. You can see the color scheme here in the photos, as well as the details of the brick in this location and in this location. And the entry porches, balconies, and window treatment. So you have entry porches, you have balconies, and then you have a variety of window treatment throughout the development. This photo is a garage elevation from the drive aisle of that project. You can see the variation in the building projection. And what I'm talking about there is how there's movement here. These planes are on different planes, so it provides some relief and interest. There are balconies, and there's variation in the roof line and the cornice details. You can notice, you can see that there, the roof has movement and that there are cornice details shown. A phasing plan is proposed with the project being developed in seven phases. The construction will start in the southeasterly portion of the site, up against San Bernardino Road, and proceed in phases to the northwest. Phase one has an estimated completion date of January 2014, and phase seven has an estimated completion date of January 2017. The proposal requires the approval of a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from industrial and manufacturing to high residential. Based on the characteristics of the surrounding land uses and the intensity of the proposed development, the project is consistent with the goals contained in the general plan as follows. And they're shown on the screen here. Housing element goal two, provide a variety of housing types to accommodate all economic segments of the, of the city. Policy 2.4, provide high-quality housing for current and future residents at all income levels to achieve a balanced community. Housing element goal four, promote equal housing opportunity for all residents. And policy 4.4, encourage housing construction or alteration to meet the needs of residents with special needs, such as large families, the elderly, and disabled. Going on with additional housing element goals. Number five, identify adequate sites to achieve housing variety. And policy 5.1, provide a range of residential development types in West Covina, including low-density, single-family homes, moderate-density townhomes, higher-density multifamily units, and residential-commercial mixed use in order to address the city's share of regional housing needs. And policy 5.6, which I think is especially appropriate, given the situation here, explore opportunities for new residential development within those areas of the city occupied by vacant or underutilized obsolete commercial and industrial uses. Lastly, we have a goal from the land use element of the general plan, which is number four, arrange land uses with regard to health, safety, convenience, and the welfare of the residents of the city. Pursuant to state law, the city is required to have an updated housing element for each planning period. The planning period is determined by the state. For the housing element update, planning period 2008 to 2014, the city's housing element is current and has been certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which we refer to as HCD. The housing element establishes goals for the construction of housing units during the planning period. The city of West Covina was allocated 2,462 units through the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which we call RENA or RHNA, for the 2008, 2009... Housing Needs Assessment, which we call RENA or RHNA, for the 2008-2014 planning period. The city is now working on the next element, the next housing element update, which is a planning period of 2014 through 2021. State law requires that jurisdictions provide their fair share of regional housing needs. Through the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, each city has allocated its fair share. The city of West Covina was allocated 831 units for the 2014-2021 planning period. The construction of these 135 units will assist the city in meeting the city's fair share of regional housing units as required by state law. A zone change is also proposed to change the zoning for the residential units from manufacturing, also called M1, to specific plan number 26, which is referred to as the Bella Vista Specific Plan. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the project. During the review period, staff received letters from AQMD, Azusa Light and Water and County Sanitation. Responses have been prepared and sent to both, for all the agencies and are included with you in the staff report. Late on Thursday, staff received an additional comment from a law firm representing Ready Pack, which is located to the north of the site in the city of Irwindale. The letter stated their concerns with the project. That letter, as well as the responses, have been distributed to you. An additional letter from AQMD was received today. The environmental analysis determined that there are no significant impacts to the environment. In addition, since last once, we've received letters of concern from Decorative Specialties, a company across the, on the north side of this project in the city of Irwindale, the city of Irwindale, and legal representatives of Ready Pack. We have also received a petition in support, as well as a letter in support from the representatives, the owners of the apartment complex located to the east of the project. These documents were provided to you tonight at the DAS. The Planning Commission reviewed the project on June 25, 2013. At that, Planning Commission meeting, there were several issues presented during the public hearing. These include the following. So I'm going to give you the issue and the response. The status of the general plan. The city of West Covina has a valid general plan with an updated housing element. There have been no court decisions invalidating the city's general plan. Status of the housing element of the general plan. The city has an updated housing element approved by the city council and certified by the, by the state on December 12, 2012. A traffic study was completed for the project. Five intersections in the vicinity were studied and the study concluded that there were no significant impacts as a result of the project. Soil contamination concerns. A phase one environmental investigation was conducted at the site, as well as a subsurface soil investigation. The studies determined that there is no soil contamination that requires site remediation. Environmental impact report required, or sometimes referred to as an EIR. EIRs are required when there are significant impacts that are caused by the project. In this case, the environmental analysis determined that all impacts could be mitigated and therefore a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared and an EIR is not required. Proximity to the railroad tracks. An acoustical analysis was completed for the project. The analysis determined that an 11-foot sound wall and the use of upgraded sound transmission control construction techniques for the exterior walls and window assemblies will reduce ambient noise to an acceptable level for residential development. The applicant has incorporated these measures into his plans. Lastly, valid state license of incorporation of business. The city of West Covina, the planning department and the Planning Commission do not regulate whether an entity is properly formed under state law. The applicant has provided information since the Planning Commission meeting that they are now valid with their state license for their business incorporation. The Planning Commission discussed that the project would eliminate abandoned buildings in blighted conditions. They're concerned that commercial retail was not viable in the area due to low traffic volumes, that there are many other residential units that are adjacent to railroad tracks without serious consequence, and that the units would be more affordable than most other housing in the city. Concern was expressed regarding the density of the development. However, the applicant indicated that reducing the number of units would affect the price of the proposed condominiums, which might cause difficulty in marketing the units. At the conclusion of the hearing, the commission voted four to one to approve the precise plan and track map and recommend approval of the general plan amendment, zone change and mitigated negative declaration. This time, I want to go through some of the benefits of the project. The proposed housing project meets the goals and policies in the general plan and the updated housing element. The city is currently updating the housing element again for the next planning period. The city was allocated 831 residential units through the RENA, and the 135 units proposed will assist the city in achieving its fair share of regional housing units in compliance with state law. The proposed project is compatible with adjacent land uses, multifamily residential to the east and the school site to the south. The proposal would therefore be a continuation of residential development that has been previously developed to the east and south. For the enjoyment benefit of the residents, 52,000 square feet of open space will be High-quality architectural design is proposed, including brick projections, recessed balconies, window projections with corbels, entry porch coverings, wood shutters, window treatment and cornice details along the roof line. The proposed condominiums will provide a moderately priced ownership alternative for home buyers. The project is in full compliance with CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. The subject properties are currently in severely blighted condition with undeveloped property, abandoned buildings and outdated structures. By eliminating blight, the project can be a catalyst to encourage adjacent property owners and businesses to improve their properties and buildings. The addition of 135 residential units will allow for an estimated 450 to 600 new residents in the area. Additional residential population creates new revenues as new residents shop and dine in the city. The construction of the property is estimated to produce something like 200 jobs. The project will provide significant revenues and fees to the city, including about 1.5 million in park in lieu fees, 471,000 in city fees for construction, and the project will be required to install public artwork valued at $161,000 or pay an in lieu fee into the city's public art fund. The project is estimated to generate about $72,000 in property tax revenue to the city per annum. Just a couple of final points. The first one, there is a need for housing in Southern California. And that's why the state requires cities to update housing elements, because it is understood that there's a statewide need to increase the number of housing units. On July 12, 2013, there was an article in the opinion section of the LA Times by an economist named Christopher Thornburg. And I'll just read a quote from that article. "Seven of the 10 least affordable housing markets in the nation are in California. California's lack of housing is by far the greatest threat to our economic growth. Many businesses cannot hope to compete in national markets when they have to pay workers far more here so those workers can afford a place to live." According to the California Association of Realtors, in May 2014, only 44% of home buyers could afford a medium-priced existing single-family house, and that's with prices at a fairly low level and interest rates at a very low level. Most people fall into two categories. Those who are struggling to afford to purchase a house, and those who own a house that they could not afford to purchase now. So there is a need for more housing units, and to be affordable, they must be built at a higher density than has historically been constructed in Southern California. Point two, land is at a premium. The Los Angeles metropolitan area is one of the largest cities in North America. Developable land is scarce, which means that people live in close proximity to each other and to other types of uses. Many houses are located near freeways, major arterials, railroads, schools, parks, sports fields, fire stations, hospitals, commercial uses and industrial uses. Many people would select the proposed type of residential units rather than move to the inland empire and accept longer commutes for moderately priced housing. This project would allow home buyers to make that choice. A project of this density will provide a transition between residential and industrial uses and will serve as a buffer between the existing manufacturing and industrial uses and the existing residential neighborhoods. The Planning Commission and staff are recommending approval of the project. We do have, the applicant is here to represent the project, as well as we have environmental consultants as well who worked on the mitigated negative declaration. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. There any questions of staff by council? Okay. Seeing none, I don't think there would be questions because that was extremely thorough and really appreciate it. You covered a lot of, of questions. I started writing down and then you were answering the questions. So thank you so much. Okay. Well, with that, then we'll drop down to in favor. And so I will first call forward Mr. Craig Cook.
Members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. This project has been a long time in the coming. It's been a long process for us. We first started working on this, this project in various forms back in 2005 and 2006. We constructed the Prosperity Business Park, which is shown on the map at 1773 San Bernardino Road. And we completed that in 2009. We, we looked at so many different types of uses for this project. We looked at commercial. We looked at retail. The community asked us to pull grocery stores and pull big boxes and various uses which they had wanted in the area or had been in the area and had left not very long ago. Albertson's left. Now its superior has come back in, but Albertson's left over in Ballpark. And years ago, there was a grocery store on the corner of Orange and Beddilo. And there was a grocery store up on Azusa. Albertson's was also left. And that's one of the paths that we took. Originally, we had the project designed with 50% of the project area as self-storage. But then we did some polling with the self-storage to our east and self-storage to our west. And they sat us down and gave us all these calculations about the population and the three square miles and dividing it and figuring how much storage you need. And, and we were, you know, committed to the property and we had purchased the property. And we tried and tried and tried. And we came up with the Prosperity Business Park. And we built that and completed that in 2009. Today, in 2013, we still yet to reach 75% occupancy at that park that's been completed for four years. Some of the aerial photos that we have in the presentation were from 2009, June of 2009. And you can see one single car in the parking lot, and that's my uncle's car when he was there at work. It's been a struggle up there on San Bernardino Road, trying to find a use that works. To our east was PICX lumber. They've been there for 50 years. They went out of business and decided to sell to their employees. Their employees ran it. And they went out of business and were, were purchased by BAR lumber, but the employees stayed. Then BAR lumber went through a restructuring and they ended up going out of business and going bankrupt. And then we, we had been neighbors and been in communications with the PICX family and the Blackard family for years. And when we saw the third attempt to run a lumberyard there, we stepped in and asked them if they had any interest in selling. And they agreed to let us move forward with the process and try to get a project approved there and see if we could find a use that could work. To their east is Blackard's Towing, which has slowly phased out of, you know, business over the last decade as they lost the towing contract. And their private storage lots and things like that. And a lot of the DUI towing yards and things went away, those checkpoints. The site is, we always had problems selling it and, and finding people who wanted to come in there as brand new. Those older buildings to our east have had a tremendous level of difficulty finding someone to come in or someone to use it because of the lack of traffic counts along San Bernardino Road, because there's no residential really to the north and to the northwest. So when you draw that circle around it and you do traffic counts and income counts, it's almost impossible to support any form of commercial or, or retail up there. So having been, having been in the neighborhood for almost a decade with another project and with this one, we thought that the only logical option for development of that site was residential. And I couldn't have said it any better than Jeff did in the articles from the LA Times, or whatever newspaper he was referring to. In order for houses to become more affordable, you have to build at higher densities. So we took a look at the density of the property that's directly to the east, the Lion's apartment complex there. And we're aware of the fact that most cities are not looking for something that's rental. They're looking for something that's homeownership, that is for sale. And that's kind of the model that we went with. We went with something that was for sale, that was higher density, that would fall into a lower price bracket down in the mid 300s, 350, 360. We had completed a project like this in Ballpark a few miles away. You saw some pictures in there. I lived in that project for two years after we built it. It was, it was a unique situation. My wife and I were both working. We had no kids. It was, it was great for us. We had no yard. We had no maintenance. We paid an association. We didn't have to do anything. We could, you know, work late, come home, be young professionals. Great experience, really enjoyed it. And that's what we found in that neighborhood of the 52 units. Only three or four of those houses really actually had kids. And as far as young kids, we only saw two units of the 52. Well, I was there for two years, that actually had elementary school kids. It seemed to be a young professional, early twenties, or my children have gone to college. I'm downsizing because I don't want a yard. I don't want to pay property taxes. I don't want something big and expensive. Or I'm moving from, you know, Canada or New York or something to be closer to my kids while they're at UCLA. And that's the kind of dynamic we saw. And we saw real absorption rate there. We saw the ability to sell these units at one unit a month pretty much consistently for three years. So that is the model that we looked when we designed this project. You're seeing them in downtown Covina. You're seeing them in Upland. You're seeing them in Alhambra. It seems to be something of kind of a, it's affordable. It's not subsidized. It's not affordable housing per se as it's subsidized or you have to qualify. But it's actually affordable because the people can pay the mortgage and own something and buy something brand new. And if you do single-family detached, if you do something with a lower density, that becomes an impossible situation to make something affordable. Currently, the city of West Covina has a project pending up on top of South Hills, which are going to be million-dollar houses. At some point, that's going to get started and it'll be great for the city. At some point, Brandywine is going to finish their houses, which is a small lot, PUD subdivision in central West Covina. And those houses, I think, will sell in the high 400s, low fives. You've got a project in the works from Wilmington Homes that I think will sell up over 500. And then you have our development, which if it was approved, it would sell in the mid 300s. I don't think it'll break 400. I think it'll be the mid to high 300s. So you're offering the citizens of West Covina something in the 300s, three-bedroom, four-bedroom. You're offering something in the fours, something in the fives, something up near a million. You're providing choices. You're providing options. You're providing, if somebody wants to live in West Covina, they're not pigeonholed or they're not cornered into a situation where they can only, they can't afford it or they can't be, get something nice enough. And I think this is an amazing feat because I don't know of any development where I've been in a city where they had so many different options for the residents to come in and purchase homes at whatever price range, at whatever location, with yards, without yards, with small yards, with big yards. And that's, that's an amazing situation. And I think that's why this project works so well. We fit perfectly into the puzzle of what West Covina is doing right now residential-wise. And that's one of the reasons why I feel like, you know, if tonight you guys make the decision to go forward, it will fit right into what you guys have been doing and provide some greater options for the citizens of West Covina. Those who live here and want to stay, those who have moved away and want to come back. They showed some pictures of Blackard's and they showed some pictures of PICX. I didn't put PICX lumber out of business. I didn't put Blackard's Towing out of business. The way that the economy has changed, the way that the traffic patterns have changed, the way that big boxes and Home Depots and Lowe's and commercial centers have changed, those uses are no longer viable. I've tried and, and brainstormed and done traffic counts and study after study to try to find the best use for this property. And I believe we found it. I believe we've built it. I believe there's a market for it. I've, I've seen it in neighboring areas. I've seen it in projects that we've built. And I think it is the best use, and this is the kind of the conversation I had with the Planning Commission, when they approved the trended track map and approved the precise plan as a land use board, it is the highest and best use. It generates, you know, the best fees. It generates the best in lieu fees for the parks. It generates the highest value as far as on the tax rolls are concerned. And though, because redevelopment is gone, it only generates 72,000 in, in property tax. All those school fees are based on the $47 million value. Now, you know, I can't calculate exactly what the fees are before, but the current value as it sits is 3 million. If it is built out in its entirety, its value will be $47 million. And those are by my estimates and prices. It could be more. It could be less. But for general purposes, my estimates were fairly conservative and that says a $47 million value. We owe it to the schools. We owe it to the, to the neighbors to the east, the neighbors in that residential development to do something that is going to be the best use and create the, the best health and safety for those residents across the street, those residents to the, to the east and those West Covina residents. And I think that our housing project does that. There's going to be people who- There's going to be people who are going to come up and say, "Traffic. There's too much traffic. There's too many units. We, we, you know, there's too much traffic. There's going to be too much traffic generated along Orange. There's going to be too much traffic generated along Sunset or Irwindale." I've done traffic counts. I did my best to generate traffic and proved to businesses how much traffic was there and how it would work, and I had no luck. We've done traffic studies when we did it as a housing project. We did traffic studies when it was a business park, and we did traffic studies now again, going back and discussing housing again. The lowest traffic uses are residential uses. Commercial and industrial uses generate more traffic than residential. Even high-density residential only generates about half the traffic if I was to do the same type of uses Prosperity Business Park. If I was to go and somehow build that, even though I couldn't get anyone to loan me the money to do so, and I still don't have what I have occupied four years after completion, it would generate twice as much traffic as the residential proposal I have in front of you guys. So people are going to come and say, "Traffic." And I agree. There's going to be more traffic than there was because there's nothing there now. And if we leave it vacant, there will be less traffic. But I don't think that's the goal of any oversight board or any land use board is to leave something vacant because that will create less traffic. It's about the highest and best use. It's about stopping the crime and the graffiti. I have to have a security guard that sits out in front of those places 24 hours a day because they'll go in, they'll break in, they'll steal wire, they'll do drugs, they'll do all sorts of things in there if I don't have a security guard there. And we have to have someone there during the day and at night, sitting out in front of it, keeping people from continuing to graffiti and commit crimes. We don't want that element. We want homeowners. We want fees and impact fees. We want students in schools. If they, you know, you do have students, they need enrollment. You're not getting any enrollment there now. You're also going to hear from the neighboring uses from the city of Irwindale, not in the city of West Covina per se, but in the city of Irwindale that's across our guest parking lot, 60-some feet, across the railroad right away, 30-some feet, across their own parking lot. I haven't measured their parking lot. And they're going to discuss all the noise that they make, all the smells and odors that they produce, all the terrible things that they do. They're going to come and get the people who buy our project. Now, if I was a business owner and I was doing some of the things that they're mentioning, and mind you, I've been there for four years in my office. It overlooks Ready Pack. It overlooks Decorative Specialties. It overlooks The Tribune. I've never experienced any of these noises. I've never experienced any of these odors. I've never had any problem with in any way, shape, or form. So if you're to come to me and ask me, I think they're great neighbors. I think they've done a good job. I don't feel any impact from them, and I'm there every single day of my life. Now, they're concerned about my residents coming in and somehow causing them grief down the road after they've been there for a while. And I understand this completely. It's hard to own a business in the state of California. It's hard to have employees and pay your workman's comp and pay your insurance and pay your taxes. And they're always concerned that the boogeyman's going to come and get them, and everyone's out to get them. And I, I, I feel for them. And through my course of outreach with my neighboring property owners, the ones that I met with, I told them, "I'm going to provide a disclosure inside of the CCNRs and Homers Association." And I went over this with my attorneys. I've already started drafting it. I sent examples of it to the surrounding neighborhood businesses that asked me for the example. I sent it to them, and it said, "This is the uses that are here. This is Heavenly Pet Resort. There's going to be dogs barking overnight because of the fact that they, you know, they're, they're a pet grooming and boarding house. You need to be aware of that. Ready Pack is delivering and producing food, and they have 24-hour access. Decorative Specialties or decorative cabinet solutions, or whatever they're called. They produce cabinets. It's a factory. They make noise. They have trucks coming in. You need to be aware of that. The Tribune is going to pick up all the newspapers and deliver them early in the morning." I have drafted that, and I fully intend, and I've promised, and it's, it's going to be included in the CCNRs, and I, I've worked with staff, and I've showed them examples. I don't want to hurt the surrounding business owners. I'm a business owner in the neighborhood. I believe in, in trying to help businesses, not hurt businesses. I want to work with the surrounding businesses, and I'm going to do everything I can to protect the businesses that were there before me and work with them and provide a tremendous amount of notice and get signatures and disclosures to my potential buyers if the project's approved, letting them know what's around them so that they don't come down the road and cause problems for these neighborhood businesses. We don't want that. Nobody does. If it's in West Covina or Irwindale or unincorporated county, everyone needs to be treated fairly. And I've worked with the surrounding businesses, even the ones I haven't spoke to. I have them listed on my disclosures as, as what they do and trying to protect them even though they, they never asked for it. So you've got a history of, of our company and my family trying to find the best use. We think we've come up with it. We've worked really well with staff, with Jeff and, and Fabiola and your entire staff. We built a project very similar to this. It was successful. We learned from it. Having lived in that project for two years, I learned from what works, what doesn't work, what needs to be adjusted, what we can do better. You can always do better, and that's one of the reasons. I think every developer should have to live in their own projects a few times so that they get a little bit of experience to what they're doing and what they can do better. And I think we have a good project here, and I think it's the best use, and I think it could be good for the city of, of West Covina and the residents. Barring that, I'm, I'm available for questions if you guys have them.
Okay. Thank you so much. After the opposition speaks, then I'll invite you to come back to address any concerns.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Jack Zell.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Breton, council member, and folks behind me. My name is Jack Chow. I'm with EDI. And sorry for, I have to wear this eyepiece because this is my only second day after eye surgery. Excuse me for that. I just dragged myself out of bed because I thought this is such a great project and I needed to show my support. Not only myself, but on behalf of the business, which is EDI, located exactly on the same location, 1773, where it's a San Bernardino Road. So we may take EDI as a living example, how we support, how we should support the develop, the local development. We started the year of 1996. From 1996 to 2009, we stayed in a small property location located in the 719 North Sunset at the corner street of Ponte. It wasn't until we found this bigger property, those great gentlemen have developed, did we have a chance to enlarge ourselves. So during the past of four years, we quite, we get quite expanded thanks to their beautiful job of developing. We get ourselves expanded, and the metamorphosis that our hand, we laid our eggs and our eggs making chicken kitchens, their chickens, and they lay eggs too. So right now, we offer 83 job opportunities on that single location. Without the development step, we wouldn't think that'd be possible. So it is a good economy, and the economy, to be honest, is bad. To me, economy is such a thing that when you think it's bad, it's bad. So when it's bad, you don't do anything. So when you stop doing anything, it goes from bad to worse. Only when you start to think positively to do something, and then it would may move. Here probably is a joke or a story will help understand because I have no background economics, but this story might understand, might say, might help explain what I want to say. Once upon a time, probably after World War II in West, in, in, in Germany, there was, there came an Australian guy from, I mean, Australian guy to a motel owner saying that I need a room. But I would have to see the room before I decided I'd rent you a room. The owner says, "Okay, I need $100 of a deposit. I give you 15 minutes. If you like it, go ahead, do it. If you don't like it, you've got to show up here 15 minutes. Otherwise, $100 is mine." Okay. So there goes the Australian guy upstairs to inspect the room. The owner went out, got on his bicycle, went to a restaurant, paid his dinner bill last night. So the owner of the restaurant went right away to pay his butcher bills because he bought his supplies from a butcher the previous night. So the owner of the butcher shop, well, here's the joking part, went to a prostitute, prostitute, paid, paid his bill the night before. And this girl paid, went back to the very hotel, to the very motel, paid her bill. And that is just the moment when the Australian guy walked down from inspecting his room, saying that none of the room that I like. So I want to go. So here's your $100. So the fact is that nobody bought anything, nobody did anything, but everybody paid their bill. So our economy is bad enough. I do urge our folks, do something to help the economy. So that's, this is why, by logic, I support them. Not only because I know them, not only because we are on their property. By the way, we bought a property. We're owners of our own property. We don't have to, to scratch their backs. So thing is that we do need it. And the last thing I want to say is my own testimony, testimony for traffic impact. Last time I was here, I heard folks say that the traffic going to, going to, going to be even worse. As a matter of fact, I, due to my work schedule, I drive by either on Orange from South Garvey all the way to...
Excuse me, Madam Speaker. You exceeded their five minutes.
Pardon?
You've exceeded your five minutes.
Somebody went more than five minutes?
That was the applicant presenting their case. They're allowed to, and...
I was here seven, I was at seven o'clock, and somebody even went 15. Can I finish what I want to say, please?
I'll defer to the city attorney then.
Okay. I didn't see that, that much traffic. And, well, I, I drive at different hours, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, all the time. I don't see the worst cases than I see somebody, there's one car in front of me, either at a stop sign or a traffic light, no more than one car. That's it. So that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Xavier Chavez.
My name is Xavier Chavez, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm a resident in the city of West Covina, also a business owner. I'm the guy that does all the wrought iron for Craig and all his projects. And I'm always having to go over to the, to the property right downtown Bernardino Road to fix everything because there's all, all this crime. And I believe it's, it's a great project, and I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kevin Lee.
Hello. Excuse me. My name is Kevin Lee. I'm here representing the Blackerds family. You know, we support the project. It, I see this, and I see the property called blighted, and it saddens me to hear it called that and to be at the property and see that it is. My grandfather and Mr. Pix brought those properties in 1953, split them and started their business and had a very successful business. I grew up riding around on a heist with my grandfather, moving cars around, playing in the cars and everything. And for him to hear that, you know, the property now has gone blighted, you know, it's bad. But, you know, we're up there. When the property shut down as a tow yard, we tried renting it for several different things. Nothing worked. Other tow yards came in and left. Tried it for other individual storage. It was more problem than it was worth. We've got two other lots in Covina that we've run even problems with, the vacant lots. We'd go up there at two o'clock, do a couple of things, leave for 45 minutes, come back. Somebody's been in, you know, broken in. They've broken into every building, and they've stolen all the copper wiring, all the electrical meters. You know, it's just a mess. And the fact... Close your ears, Craig. The only fact that there's anything that's, that's not broken out in the front windows is because the Cooks hired security guards there for, you know, 24-hour access. You know, as soon as the security guards were there, the problems basically kind of stopped. When the security guards leave, you know, we're going to have problems. There'll be talk about tanks, the gas tanks. The tanks have been removed. They've been removed for over a decade. They were clean, you know, bill of report when those were moved in. You know, I'm not sure what will happen with the property. If, if, you know, if it doesn't go through, the windows start getting broken out, they're just going to get boarded up. We've replaced windows, trying to keep the place looking as well as it does. You know, painted over graffiti. And, you know, the families just kind of, kind of had it with all that stuff. I was down there, you know, the other day, like I said, working, eating my, you know, have my, go over to In-N-Out, have my lunch there, and remembered back all the times I sat there with my grandparents, my father, the guys that worked the tow yards and everything else. And like I said, it's, it's sad to see the way the property looks right now, and it's sad to see the way the Pix Lumber, you know, looks right now. As far as the housing, I'm also, I can testify as far as this type of real estate. I'm a real estate agent in the city of Glendore. They're building the similar units along the railroad tracks on Glendore Avenue, just north of the railroad tracks. High-density, you know, I get in there, I look at it, and, you know, yeah, it's not for me. I wouldn't want to live there. You know, I, I wouldn't want to live in these. I've got two small kids and, you know, I've got other things I want to park. This isn't the type of housing, you know, that I'd want. There are a lot of people that that's what they want. You know, they don't want a large lot. They don't want to take care of yards. They don't want to, you know, all the other problems that come in with this. I mean, this is the type of a housing right now, and at this price point, it's going to be very popular, I think. I mean, prices are going up right now, and it's hard for people to get into any kind of entry-level, you know, housing right now. They'll, they'll talk about, you know, kids playing in green space and that kind of stuff. And kids, I mean, it's a sad fact now. Kids don't play outside. They don't grab a baseball bat and a, you know, glove and go get 10 other kids that are in the neighborhood and go to a vacant, you know, field and, you know, play ball. They're playing on their smartphones and, you know, video games, and they're, they're communicating with everybody like that. Teenagers don't need their license. They don't want their license anymore for cars. I mean, the society has changed, you know, since I was a kid and, you know, I'm sure when all you guys were a kid. I couldn't wait to get outside of the house. Kids aren't like that these days. I think this will be a good project for the community. I think they'll, he'll do well with the, the price point that he, that he came up with. I learned of the price point at the Planning Commission meeting, and at the time, I thought, I thought that was, you know, quite well. But other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Don Cook.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This project is, as, as Jeff pointed out, and Jeff did a great job. This project is going to reflect the reality. This property is technically zoned M1. But when they closed the doors on Pix and Blackerds for the last time, it really quit being an M1 site and became a blighted site. This will be, this will form a link between the property to the west, which are the, the apartments, and be a buffer for them and the industrial. The individuals, the representatives of the, of the apartment sent a letter to the council that the Bella Vista is a project that I am personally extremely excited about. The benefit to the immediate neighborhood in terms of removing blight and elevating the livability of the street is priceless. Developers that risk their own personal capital to elevate the community of West Covina should be encouraged, especially with such transformative developments that activate streets with families and a great sense of community. I cannot encourage the city planners strongly enough to approve the project with positively impacts, the values of life in the wider surrounding neighborhood and the immediate residents on this specific street. One of the things that will happen here is it'll actually, as I said, we're going to link all this stuff together. Right now and in front of Pix and in front of Blackerds, there is no sidewalk. In front of our industrial condos, there is a sidewalk. We're going to extend that sidewalk down. We're going to landscape it, and we're going to link all of that stuff there together. As Jeff pointed out, there's residential to the east, there's residential to the south, there's residential across the railroad tracks. This particular site is an island of, of blight that needs to be corrected, and this project will do it. The good news and the bad news is this. A number of our speakers had to leave. Good news is, you guys won't, this won't drag on much longer. One of them had to take his mother to the airport. She had to fly back to Brazil. Another one of our speakers, there was a death. Another one of our speakers, there was a death, the pastor had to go and minister to a family that lost someone tonight, so they won't be speaking this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. I do have one speaker card and I'm going to ask the city attorney, it is neutral. Would I put that with in favor or would I?
There's really no precedence for that, we can put it in the middle.
Okay, then we're in the middle. I would like to call forward Lisa Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for that ruling, city attorney. I've been really wanting to go home. I live at Ranch Akuka Munga, but I am the CEO of the Irwindale Chamber of Commerce and I'm not here to support or oppose this project. It sounds like a great project, I, you know, not here to say you should or you shouldn't. My purpose here tonight was just to try to ensure that there is a good neighbor policy. Certainly Ready Pack Produce is one of our largest employers, in fact, our second largest employer in town with about fifteen hundred employees. And certainly anything that might negatively impact them concerns our city because it is such a large piece of our economic development, not just for Irwindale, but for the surrounding communities and what they provide in buying gas and shopping when they're coming to and from work. So there's benefit to the city of West Covina as well with their presence on your border. So my only concern is, number one, would there be any negative impacts? And from the, the city's report, it sounds like that may not be with the, what did he call it, the information to the, to the potential residents, letting them know about the, the potential impacts. Perhaps that's already been handled. But certainly when you have a situation like Ready Packs, which is a twenty-four hour trucks in and out, which will be backing up directly to that property, will the sound wall make a big difference? I don't know. But certainly earlier this evening, we heard, heard a woman talk about being able to go outside at midnight and it was quiet. That will not be the case for these residents. It really won't. They're going to hear noise from those trucks because it is a twenty-four hour operation. And as long as everybody's aware of that, that is my only purpose tonight. I know you'll make the right decision for your community, I hope you make the right decision for your future residents as well as the neighboring businesses on both sides of the border. And I thank you for your time tonight. Good night.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will move to, if there's no, no one else in favor or in a neutral, we will move forward to the cards that in opposition to the general plan amendment and zone change. First, I will call forward Santiago, it looks like Rashid, I'm sorry, I can't read the writing. R-A-C-H-E-D? Here? Okay. Thank you so much.
Mayor, council members and citizens of West Covina. My name is Santiago Pacheco. I am the Director of Operations for the facility Ready Pack. Ready Pack employs fifteen hundred associates. We are, we brought some of our Ready Pack residents, Ready Pack employees that are residents of West Covina as well. We can certainly introduce those to you, they wrote their names on, on their card, just so that you can understand that people from West Covina live, that work at Ready Pack as well. The one, the one big concern obviously from being a Director of Operations that I have is the fact that we, we are a twenty-four hour operation. And Ready Pack is a big giant refrigerator, what it is. We have eleven acres worth of refrigeration building. It's a twenty-four hour a day because the shelf life of the product only lasts ten to twelve days. So we have to be moving in and out constantly. And yes, we do have neighbors sixty-five feet away on the opposite side where trucks do not transit. That is correct. So those, those reports are correct. But on the side where the build, the proposed is a building of one hundred and thirty-five high density resident complex is going to be built, we do have all of our loading docks there for, for shipping and receiving docks. Because Ready Pack is a giant refrigerator, we do have a refrigerant which is called anhydrous ammonia. We have fifty thousand pounds of anhydrous ammonia. When we first moved in twenty years ago, we were, we had to comply and we continue to comply with CalARP, Cal OSHA, SEA QMD and the EPA. Obviously, we didn't have the neighbors that are being proposed today of one hundred and thirty-five homes, which is over six hundred people. The studies that we've done with our CalARP, which is California Accidental Release Prevention with the LA Fire Department, talks about how we evacuate our people from the building. And then the Fire Department, they do their own calculation as to the, how, if they have enough resources to evacuate people from the surrounding communities of Ready Pack that may be impacted. If we, I don't know how this was considered in terms of a high density building being built with six hundred people and if there was an accidental release, how would they evacuate? I don't know. So it's, it's something that's open still for debate or to, to be answered or to be analyzed so that we can all have and make the right decision and do our due diligence to make sure that that was considered as well as part of the studies that have been Obviously, the one thing that's not, it's in conflict is a residential and industrial or manufacturing zone. And I say in conflict is because we are a twenty-four hour operation and we will be operating, required to operate twenty-four hours since our products only last ten to twelve days. Again, we have brought some of our employees that are residents of West Covina to expedite the process. We can certainly introduce them to you and they can say they oppose the project or they can come and individually state their name. It's, it's up to, up to you. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, we really appreciate it. I do have several speaker cards, it's council's pleasure or I can call them forward.
I offer that as a time saving for you and I know it's late.
Yeah, absolutely, we appreciate that.
That's fine. I understand we're going to be opposed.
Okay. Did you want to have them come forward or would you like them to, would you like to introduce or do you want me to introduce which speakers I have?
Sure.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Go ahead and introduce.
You guys want to come forward?
I can call the speaker cards that I have written here, if it's, if it's something we can do legally, is that correct? Mr. City Attorney, I want to make sure with the attorney that we're-
Okay, sure. Then why don't you just make sure that the speaker cards match the people? Why don't you-
Okay, I'll just call the speaker cards, you guys can stand up and wave and if you want to come forward and speak, how's that? You can come forward. Okay? So first Jessica Moreno?
Yes, please.
Would you like to speak?
Hello, there I am.
Okay. Devonte Berlos?
Hello.
Right here? Okay, thank you, would you like to speak?
No.
No? Okay. Tony Hernandez? Would you like to speak?
I just want to say a quick comment.
Come forward.
Okay, well, good evening. Well, speaking as a resident of West Covina, I've been living there ten years now and the thing I like about West Covina is very spacious, not heavy traffic flow. And I would oppose as a resident because I think adding the new housing complex would create more traffic, it would be more hectic. I mean, then later on you're going to be seeing people here again trying to build houses on top of that and, you know, I just think it's a bad idea and like, maybe there will be problems and conflict later with the neighbors and the noise from Ready Pack. And I just think they should just, if, think more importantly that Ready Pack provides hundreds of employment for people and if that were to put, if that were to put Ready Pack in jeopardy just to build a housing complex that would cause traffic and more hecticness in the morning, I just don't think they should do it. That's all.
Anita?
I'll just keep this going.
Okay. You don't, do, would you like, ask her if she'd like to speak or just?
No.
Okay. All right. Tom Levine? Would you like to speak? Are you here?
I'll speak after that.
Okay, I'll, I'll set your card to sign, it just says Ready Pack on it, so. Rosa Ramirez? Rosa? No? Joshua Siano?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
You would like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Josh Siano, I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Ready Pack. There's a couple of things that I wanted to make the council aware of that I think are pretty important to me and to the Ready Pack family. We do value our community and being a integral part of that community means that we aren't put at odds with our surrounding community. We currently employ fourteen to fifteen hundred hourly employees. We also employ four hundred salaried employees in plant overhead and SGNA. We provide over sixty million dollars annually in salary and wages and benefits to employees that work at that facility. If that facility were to be limited in its use to only two shifts, we're not to run twenty-four hours a day, that facility would move. It will move. We have to operate twenty-four hours a day and that's our fear when we come in and we see this project and we're, have residents that I could stand at our loading docks, thirteen of them, and throw a baseball and hit that building. It concerns us. The, the other part that I think is important is that in the local community and surrounding area, we spend close to ten million dollars a year with local businesses coming in, temporary agencies, supplies, maintenance type, small businesses. Those are, those are things that go away when, when a business leaves, they'll stay local with us. The other things I wanted to point out were that our company is looking at expanding and making a seven million dollar investment next year into the LA County wastewater development to keep with some of the expansion that we want to do in that facility. Those things will all have to be put on hold if this project because the uncertainty, our future will be uncertain in that facility. So there's a lot at risk here for us and it, it does make us nervous because we want to be a good story to the community and we want to work with our community to make sure. But it concerns me when I think that people are going to be outside their balcony on a Sunday night and they're going to hear a constant beep, beep, beep of a truck backing up. Or they're going to be opening their windows at night and hear that all night long. It, it's something that we don't want to put something in the way where we know it's going to put us at odds. And, and that's how we see this project. It's, you're, we're going to change the zoning to put housing next to the facility where we, we know we do those things. And we've put the shipping docks where they are so that there was minimal impact to the other residences around us. So the facility is designed that way and when this comes in, that all kind of goes for naught and we'll be in here, I'm sure in the future, speaking about the complaints of our neighbors with the noise levels that we have. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next Ready Pack person would like to come forward, Fernando Santos? Would you like to speak or just? Robert Arzola? Would you like to speak?
Good night. My name is Roberto Arzola and I've been living in West Covina for the last fourteen years. Been working for Ready Pack for the last twenty-four years. And all I can say about Ready Pack is a good company, keep the employees for many, many years. I'm an example, so I have twenty-four years for the company. And I don't want to lose my job, that's all that I can say. And Ready Pack is a good company. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have, it doesn't say a name on here or as far as if they're with Ready Pack, I have a Michael Finnegan?
I will speak after Ready Pack for a minute.
After? Okay. Then that is all the Ready Pack speakers I do have. I have Robert Lambert with Foxdale Properties. Okay. I'll go ahead and call Tom Levine from Glasser Wheel with Ready Pack.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson and members of the city council, members of the public and city staff. I'm Tom Levine from Glazer Whale and I'm a lawyer who represents Ready Pack. And I start with an apology to you. We were just retained late over the weekend. Our mission was to tell the Ready Pack people who are based back east whether this project is a good one for them, a good one for the city of West Covina. And we've been unable to do that in a day. And as a result of that, we felt that we had to protect our client and today we emailed to all of you and the city attorney and the city clerk and the city manager, a six-page letter. Five and a half pages were written by my partner who's a Sequo expert and she made a bunch of Sequo challenges. A half page was written by me. And I think the half page is important and that had to do with a continuance of tonight's hearing. And to say that we're light, that we're late to the party is an understatement. But I am unable to advise my client whether this is a good project or not. Clearly, it's a good project for the developer because I, I didn't know till earlier this evening that you had a delta between three million and forty-seven million as to what the project's worth. So if we had a continuance, which in my mind is much preferable to litigation, and I believe you also have a letter from the city manager of Irwindale requesting a continuance, what would we talk about? One of the things we would talk about, and this goes to the issues that you all raised in item number twelve tonight. You protected the residents of West Covina. You determined that there were some things that they didn't know about where they lived. Well, there's some things that we don't know about this project. You heard the plant manager from Ready Mac, Ready Pack talk about the ammonia protocol that's required by the AQMD, the EPA, Cal OSHA and the Fire Department. Now we have a new element, which is this project. We haven't had an opportunity to sit down with those agencies, with the developer, with staff to see how we'd work out that protocol. If we're unable to work out that protocol and don't have sufficient time, then what does Ready Pack do? One of its options, which is not a favorable option to it, is to move. If it moves, then all of the people who are residents of West Covina, who work in Ready Pack and some of whom are here tonight are going to lose their job. So I'm here not to argue for anything against the project, but simply to request a continuance to allow me the opportunity to sit down with the developer, the regulatory agencies and to try to work out a number of issues that need to be worked out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I call the next speaker forward, I wanted to ask staff a brief question in reference to them being just noticed. I mean, this went to Planning Commission and so could you have a brief response to that?
I, I didn't understand him to say that they were just noticed, that he was just hired by Ready Pack, I think that's what he, he was stating. But yes, noticing did go out twenty days prior to-
Okay, yeah, I was, I was thinking they had a day and I'm thinking, well, they've known, I mean, this went to planning-
On June twenty-fifth and it was noticed on or about the fifth, the fourth, the fifth.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be clear with that. Thank you so much. With that, I will call forward Robert Lambert.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Robert Lambert and I'm Vice President of Foxdale Properties, which is the owner of forty-four oh one Foxdale Avenue where Ready Pack has been a tenant for over twenty years. When the property was acquired and rehabilitated for Ready Pack's use, it was intentionally designed such that the truck parking would be away from the housing and residential uses that are currently there because they are a twenty-four hour operation and they, they have a lot of light and a lot of sound at night and they also operate a feed operation, a cattle feed recycling operation where the materials processed come out of the building at that side. And it's, you know, it's a use that, that the landlord doesn't see as being compatible with the residential neighborhood and there was a lot of talk with item number twelve about, you know, West Covina not wanting uses that are incompatible with each other and we view this as one that would be incompatible for our tenant and also should they leave- and we view this as one that would be incompatible for our tenant, and also should they leave for future tenants. As you heard, they employ approximately 1,500 full-time employees and another 400 or so part-time employees, or temporary employees, and many of those employees are West Covina neighbors, and, you know, if they leave, those are going to be jobs lost for the city, and in my experience, leasing industrial property, if Ready Pack were to leave, it would be hard to find a replacement tenant with that use next to the loading docks, because the first thing that any large manufacturing user looks at is, what's your proximity to residential, and is that going to create any disharmony with the neighbors? And businesses don't like to put themselves in that situation, so they avoid it. Also, Mr. Cook, at the beginning of his presentation, had mentioned that the, you know, property was blighted and how difficult it had been for him to lease the small industrial development that he did, but the reality is that there's not a lot of manufacturing space left in the San Gabriel Valley, and the vacancy rate is around 4.4%. And while, yes, it's very hard to lease smaller-sized industrial units, that property is a size that you could put a larger industrial building, and there is a lot of demand for that right now, and that would be a viable use for the space. It would bring a lot of new jobs to the city of West Covina, and those manufacturing, technology, you know, industrial uses and manufacturing uses that aren't retail, they don't care about traffic counts. In fact, they prefer streets that have less traffic, so they're not looking for retail traffic, and that could be a viable use for that site. And I guess, in conclusion, I just, you know, really think this isn't, what's been proposed isn't conforming with the neighborhood and would be incongruous, and isn't what would be best for West Covina. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Michael Finnegan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members, Staff. I'm going to apologize in advance, because it's late, but I'm going to get a little bit legal on you here. I represent the Foxdale Properties and the owners of the property that is now being operated by Ready Pack. I understand the concept here, and what you're trying to do is to get the best and most useful use of this particular property, and you have a proposal in front of you. The question is, do you have enough information to, one, approve a project, and, two, approve a project that would make sense in light of the competing and uses that are surrounding that property? Sequa here compels this council to do certain things. If you heard from the staff report, he indicated in a very nice report that the Planning Commission recommends adoption. Sequa requires that this city council take complete public input, consider that public input, in determining one critical factor. Is this proposed new use a significant impact? And I'm going to get to that in a moment in my comments, but the Planning Commission made that recommendation before receiving full and complete public input, public comment. It made that decision early. Ordinarily, in these scenarios in different cities, the Planning Commission will, in fact, make that determination. Had it done so here, that would be a clear Sequa violation, and this would be all undone. To get around that, what the city Planning Commission has done has given that obligation now to you. You have to exercise that obligation, that duty to your citizens, to take public input and make that determination. Is there a potential for a significant impact here that would require what? What am I really talking about? The process now of a mitigated negative declaration is the shortcut. It's not the full-blown analysis that should be done when you're talking about pitting a number of what will be either new or existing residents up against a very significant and multiple industrial uses. You can't do this in a shortcut version. You have to look at an EIR. So what are you charged tonight with doing? Tonight and later, I would endorse the comments of Mr. Levine and request a continuance here so that you have more information. Your job is to take the public input, which the Planning Commission did not do, and had it hurt it, it may have come with a different recommendation, and determine whether or not there's a significant impact. If so, Sequa absolutely requires mandates, you must get an EIR if there's a significant How do you determine whether, as you're exercising your obligation, how do you determine whether or not there's a significant impact? You do that by either looking at the Sequa guidelines or a Sequa permits, look at what the city itself has now adopted as that standard. This particular mitigated negative declaration has provided in it the parameters for what is a significant impact that would require an EIR. One of those parameters is found at section 310 of the report which you have at page 75, and what it provides is that if the project physically divides an established community, that's a significant impact, or, this is key language, or otherwise result in an incompatible land use. If there is evidence, which you've been hearing all this evening, that there is a potential for an incompatible land use, by the definition of the MND, the mitigated negative declaration, you must find that there's a significant impact. That requires an EIR. What we're all interested in having happen is the right result for this particular project. For, when I say project, this parcel. It may be some form of a project like this, after full consultation of an EIR, that may mitigate these issues that have impacted by the incompatible uses. It's your obligation and your responsibility to your citizens not to pit them in this scenario without exercising that obligation to hear the public comment, follow the guidelines of the MND, which says if there is a significant impact, which is defined as being an incompatible use, you're obligated to define that as requiring an EIR. A continuance or the requirement of an EIR would allow you and give you the information that you really need to know, because I know what you're thinking. Sounds good. It looks good. I like the Corbould concept, but is this really something that we want to put our residents into?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Speaker, see there five minutes.
If I might, your honor, Madam Mayor, I'm almost done. The question then is, an EIR would give you that information, would give you that time to make the determination. Is this the right project, and is it formulated in the right way so that we can get for our city the best use for this parcel? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Corey Warshaw.
Madam Mayor, Council Members, I don't know that I'm opposed to this project. I'm opposed to it in the form that it's in, and probably a little more so now than I was before after hearing from Ready Pack, and I do believe that there should be a continuance. But if I go back and if I look at this project, you know, it talks about 52,000 open space, not green space, open space. Now, these are three- and four-bedroom homes. Mr. Cook said he lived in a 52-unit complex, no kids. That's not what he's building. He's building three- and four-bedrooms. That's not for two people, no kids, not at 1,700 to 2,100 square feet. We're talking kids. When the plan came up there and I saw open space, I saw sidewalks, and I saw bushes. I didn't see any grass. I saw two small pools. Where are kids going to play? Mr. Cook said, well, teenagers don't play, you know, they drive cars. Right. Let's talk about cars. Parking. We're only looking at a two-car garage, and we know most people don't park two cars in a garage. It's just the way life is these days. So let's say they park one. Some will park two, some won't park any. So where do the other cars go if you have three- and four-bedroom homes? Now, in this plan, it calls for parking, some parking, to go to the Cooks' other property. I don't understand that, because Mr. Cook said his father is the only one who parks in their huge parking lot now. Why do they need more parking? Why isn't that parking being used for this project? Is it because they want to add more to prosperity later on and will need the more parking? Whether that's the case or not, it doesn't matter. We need to look at parking in this. There isn't going to be street parking. It'll be very little. There isn't going to be places for little kids to play. They're going to have to stay in the homes. You can't open your windows. They talk about soundproofing. Well, yeah, soundproofing does work. I just put new windows in my house, double pane, you know, extra glaze, keeps it quiet. But I like to open my windows. How are you going to open windows in this place with Ready Pack right behind it? You can't with a train. Now, the train doesn't run that often at night, which is good, but Ready Pack's operating 24 hours a day, and so is at least one or two of the other businesses. So they can't open their windows. In addition, you look at three stories. Why three stories? You know, it's not for the elderly, as Jeff Anderson talked about in that, we need more for the elderly and we need more for the disabled. They don't have elevators, as far as I know, so the disabled are going to have a hard time with it. The elderly are going to have a hard time with it. So what is it for? It's for families. Families that will have no place to play, families that will have no place to park. If I was to build this, if it doesn't impact Ready Pack, I don't think it should be over two stories. You've only got an 11-foot sound wall in the back. If you look where I live, you have units right next to, or homes right next to the freeway. That's a lot more than 11-foot wall that they've got, because it covers both stories. You know, are you going to build a three-story wall to hold that noise back? In addition, what are the people going to look at? They're going to be looking at the tops of the roofs of Ready Pack and these other buildings, which have refrigeration, air conditioning, things that people don't want to look at. This is too dense. It would need to be less dense for this type of project to go in. And so with that, I would first ask that you postpone this so that you can hear back from Ready Pack, and also look at, if you are going to allow this, that parking not go to prosperity, to go to this project, and also getting some green space where kids can play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the City Council, members of the city staff, and members of the audience, this is a mitigated negative declaration that was handed out at the Planning Commission. I told the Planning Commission that you needed an environmental impact report, but it fell on a deaf ear. The previous speaker spoke well, and being educated as an attorney, he knows the legal leagues behind what I had requested. The only individual that I have to really give respect to listen to what was said at the Planning Commission is Mr. Holtz. He's the chairman of the Planning Commission, and he was the lone vote that said, no, after hearing what everybody, as citizens, had to say. We weren't Ready Pack. We didn't have the impact that Ready Pack had. But Lloyd Johnson gave the signatures of people who made the largest investment, and that was their home, and they said they didn't want this project in their neighborhood. I remember members of the City Council saying we shouldn't go to districts, and the reason we shouldn't go to districts is each one of you represented all of West Covina. Which one of you came and talked to us, like Lloyd Johnson did? Which one of you spoke up for the people who had invested in West Covina? This is Tuiville. Mike Tui has an investment to buy one of the condominiums in that project, and when Lloyd Johnson handed Jeff Anderson a piece of paper from the state of California that said Mr. Cook's license had been suspended, Mr. Holtz said he doesn't remember seeing it. The company that wanted to build homes here, their license had been suspended. So what does he say? Gee, Dad, come on, defend me. And guess what? Within the next week, they went and corrected the problem and got their license back as a corporation. How can the city do business with a corporation that had its license suspended by the state? Can anybody give me that answer? Can you ask the staff? Ask the attorney if you can do business with somebody that doesn't have a corporate license in the state of California. So I need you to stand up right now. I want to know which one of you represents me on my side of town, because you put a moratorium based on the number of cars you didn't want parked in South Hills on 4,500 square-foot homes. The noise? They make a statement here about noise, but they don't make the statement that Ready Pack did about the implications of the letter that they sent that talked about, and which you have a copy of, about why this project isn't good for Ready Pack, in effect, wasn't good for the people that were going to be future residents of the city of West Covina. You have an obligation, but it's not to Ready Pack. It's to the voters of West Covina, the people who work there, and those of us who Lloyd Johnson, who's running for the city council, came out and did some footwork, like you used to do when you ran for this council seat. You're going to go out and ask people of the city that you represent us? Or do you represent the developers who don't live here? I want you to stand up and be counted for the people who elected you to represent them. Maybe one of you can come and ask us if we want that project in our neighborhood. 20 units per acre? I live at 424 North Willow. I have a half-acre lot. That's what West Covina used to be in 1947, when my house was built. Ms. Anderson, you asked for a variance where you live to protect horse property. What happened to my neighborhood? All you guys live in South Hills. A moratorium behind 4,500 square-foot homes, over parking. Wow. What a bunch of hypocrites.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson. First of all, before I begin, I'd like to hand in some cards. There's 13 of them here, the residents that's been sitting here all evening, and these are the ones who live on Palm, Morris, Adams Drive, and Ken Oak. A couple of them had to leave because they have to work in the morning, they couldn't stay any later. So I'd like to turn these in right now so they can put on record, and you may call them if you like, and have them stand up like you did the others, but every one of them's going to tell you that we all stand together. So before I begin, I'd like all the residents that live on Morris, Palm, Adams Drive, and Ken Oak, stand up that are against this project. Thank you. Mayor Sanderson, council members. First of all, I'd like to know, I turned in 117 names that the residents over there that signed the petition, that Jeff Anderson didn't mention to you tonight in his report. He's mentioned about those that were in favor of it, that turned in letters, but he didn't mention the 117 names that I turned in. So council members, the residents of Palm, Morris, Adams Drive, and Ken Oak are here tonight to let you know we are against this project on San Bernardino Road, right around the corner from where we live. The traffic will be unbearable at times going down Orange Avenue, since Orange is a thoroughfare through the San Bernardino Freeway. We are talking about 300 to 500 cars going down through our neighborhood, along with all the pollution created by these vehicles. All way of life will be changed for the worst if these 135 townhomes are allowed to be built in our already overcrowded West Covina. On the other hand, I would hope you would take into consideration, there hasn't been a testing of all the soil that is on this property of 1611, 1623, and 1773. I know for sure there has been quite a few spills of diesel fuel, gasoline, and a freeze for radiators at 1611 Blackers' property. I have also witnessed empty cans of kerosene. They were rusted out, along with paint thinners that were rusted out. They were in a car trailer with wooden planks for the floor. The trailer belonged to a friend of mine who kept the equipment stored at Blackers'. He was a very good. good friend of Harold Blackers'. His name was Herb Rosner, and I'm quite sure the gentleman that's for Blackers here knows exactly who I'm talking about. One time, we were working on his wood chipper, and the fuel line broke, and we didn't catch it in time, and at least 15 to 20 gallons of diesel fuel leaked into the ground before we caught it. I have seen people who stored their vehicles there. They drained the radiators many times on the property. They had to change the oil and dump the oil on the ground. Also, on the backside of 1773, where Altadena site used to be, Athens used to work on the trucks there. There must have been a leak or two from the trucks. They used the waterblaster trucks to clean them. These places have never been tested for hazardous waste. You must go down more than six inches to find contamination in the soil. As an ironworker who has worked in every refinery in the Los Angeles County, I have been around a lot of hazardous waste. Hazardous waste has to be, that's what's built, has to be cleaned up. No matter how this council feels about this project, first, we would hope you would do the right thing and stand with the residents of our neighborhood and turn this project down, and not with the developer who has donated thousands and thousands of dollars to a few of the council members. This project has to be put on hold until a complete environmental impact report is done on these sites, no matter how long it takes. This council cannot allow this developer, or any developer, to build homes on this property that are meant to be industrial property, when there's a chance that there might be hazardous waste in the ground where the homes will be built on top of it. There isn't a council member up here tonight, or developer, or anyone from Blackers that can say I am wrong. I might not be right about the hazardous waste still being in the ground, but nobody knows until a complete testing of all the soil is done down more than six inches. Are you going to take the chance when there could be a medical problem for the residents that will be buying these homes and the lawsuits that will follow because you let a developer build homes on hazardous waste? Councilmember McIntyre, now is the time for you to stand up behind what you said in the newspaper, when you said the council can work harder to attract better developers and private investors. We're asking you to stand with the residents and not against them. And remember, you are there to represent the residents of West Covina.
Madam Mayor, I see you there five minutes.
15 seconds, now be done. Councilmember Sotelo, now is the time for you to stand up for the residents of West Covina. The residents that live in the part of West Covina where you stated in the newspaper, a lot of us don't go to these parts of the city. What we're asking you is to do the right thing. There isn't been, you know, an IR on this part. We need to have it tested. We need to do a right environmental impact report on it to make sure that it is correct and make sure there's no hazardous waste in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Elsie Messman.
Good evening, everybody. I've been up here once before, but I'm tonight to oppose the building of the 135-town homes also. And parking and cars that are going to be in the area, if there's 135-town homes, even two cars apiece, it's 270 cars. That's way too many. And plus, the train next door, okay? West Covina Homes LLC did not, as one of the people had stated, did not have a valid corporation license at the time the planning commission approved it. And like Lloyd said, 117 residents, signatures, living around the area that don't want the project. So there's five council members, five planning commissions. That's 117 to 10, again. Listen to the residents. And by the way, Mayor, not mayor, Tui had an interest in the project. On his 770 forms, he stated that he had an option to buy a condo, okay? And as I said before, one of the planning commissioners that voted for the project, she took, she was a salaried employee, taking $3,000 in 2005 from Tui, $750 in 2009 from Tui, and $2,500 salary in 2012. That's according to his 460 forms, and there's probably more. But as Ready Pack said, I think they are right. With all the trucks backing up and what have you, going 24 hours a day, we don't have enough people in this industry, other than, all we have in this town is restaurants and restaurants and restaurants, okay? We don't need any more of that. We need people like Ready Pack that will employ employees, okay? So I think we should leave this land to the industrial and manufacturing and not change it to these condos, because that is not, the people in the area do not want it. And for the man that said he has to put security there 24 hours a day, there is such a thing as a security system that could probably help him a lot. And I think that the woman that did, took the money from Tui, I think that would be a conflict of interest also. And I read most of this before, but I think, like somebody said about those homes, there's, homes were to be approved, there were approved on Valinda, and now you want townhouses approved? Why didn't you approve the homes to be built in South Hills? Is there going to be another lawsuit? You should listen to the people who live there, not the developers. Because these homes in South Hills, if you can't build them, how come you want to build these? Okay, and I think they should be put on the back burner. And as far as I'm concerned, I think a McDonald's would do great in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I have no further speaker cards, so I'd like to call forward Mr. Craig Cook for any rebuttal to the testimony that has been given this evening.
Craig Cook, our business address is 1773 West San Bernardino Road. I'm going to kind of touch on a couple of points that were mentioned by previous speakers. I'll first touch on the point of Ready Pack and their CFO or their CEO, I don't know which one it was, their controller, when he stated about their ammonia and the deadly gas and ammonia that was going to, needed an action plan and was going to come out, and how are we going to deal with evacuation and fire and stuff like that? My access point in my project doesn't have anything to do with their access point. I don't have anything to do with their fire department. I don't have anything to do with their police department. I don't even know if you have the same ambulance company, but I probably don't have anything to do with that as well. Their entrance is, I don't know, all the way down Semerita Road and then up Irwindale Drive. They do not enter, or we don't cross paths. We don't have anything to do with each other as far as egress, ingress, fire, police, ambulance. We went through a rigorous review process by the West Covina Police Department, and I feel very confident in the West Covina Police Department. I feel very confident in their review process. All of our units are now sprinklered. There's multiple accesses in. New water service was put out in the street in San Bernardino Road. It upgraded it to 10-inch, so it has fantastic water flow. The prevailing winds in the area are blowing from our project across Ready Pack, towards the mountains, away from our site. If there was this deadly ammonia gas cloud, I don't, I always was a resident or a neighbor of Ready Pack, and I've never had any problem with Ready Pack. I didn't know they were so dangerous. I didn't know that they had so many chemicals and they caused so much danger to the residents. Mind you, there's hundreds of residents right next door to me that are there if I build this project or not, in that existing apartment, who've been there for decades. I didn't, I never saw Ready Pack as a bad neighbor. I never saw Ready Pack as a danger. I hope that if it's so dangerous for my residents, that if I was to build this project 100 or so feet away from them, that the 1,500 of their employees who are trapped inside the building, that it's safe enough for them. I believe in Ready Pack. I believe that their business is safe. I don't think that there's a concern. I mean, they want to come up and portray a concern about ammonia and fire and evacuation. Once again, they don't have anything to do with us. We don't, we don't access across the same streets. We don't access within a mile of each other. We don't use the same departments. We have nothing to do with emergency services or access with Ready Pack. They commented about how the trucks are not driving by the residents that are in Irwindale, the ones that are 60 feet. The ingress point into Ready Pack passes by all the houses that are right there along, it's end of place. They drive in there and they drop off their refrigerated trucks, or they pick up the refrigerated trucks and drive back out on the same road. They don't sit there and hang out. They drop off their truck, and it's loaded. They back it up to the loading docks. It's a sealed refrigerated loading dock. They load the truck up, and then at some other time, a truck comes and picks it up and takes it away. The amount of truck traffic that passes the houses on end of place is identical, identical to the traffic that passes by my residence, even though my residents are on the other side of a sound wall, and my residents on the other side of a train track, and my residents on the other side of their parking lot. Now, I've got a sound wall. I've done sound studies. I'm not creating the noise or creating the ammonia gas. I don't know, it's a confusing situation to me, and I hope at some point that staff and the council will touch upon the city attorney's letter responding to their statements about this concept of, I'm building a project, and when we do a CEQA, we're determining if we, our project, is causing environmental impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding land uses. If we do cause impacts, then we need to mitigate those impacts, providing more water, you know, creating less emissions, building sound walls, things like that, that keep our construction, our project, from impacting the environment. A NECDAC is not, I'm where you're Ready Pack, I'm causing a pollutant, I'm causing a problem, so don't let them build because I'm causing a problem. That's not a CEQA, that's not the purpose of a CEQA. The purpose of a CEQA is to make sure that when I develop my site, I don't cause problems for other people. It's not, I'm causing problems if I'm ex-business and you come along to do on your property, and you're going to catch me, or you're going to complain about the fact that I'm causing problems. That's not what a CEQA is designed for, and I hope that the city attorney and staff will touch upon that with council. But I just wanted to bring it up in case it doesn't. And if you do have questions, I have my CEQA, the person who prepared my CEQA document, and he's responded numerous times, so has our acoustical study guys, to their allegations and their outlandish comments about dangers and concerns, and we're going to have to fire all the employees if you build this, and we're not going to expand our company. We have nothing to do with them. We don't want anything from them. We don't access our project off them. We don't affect them in traffic. We don't have anything to do with them. And like I said, I've always been a big fan of Ready Pack. I've been next to them for three or four years. Never had a problem with them. Never saw any of the dangers or the noises that they talk about and they're concerned about. A train goes by that site 42 times a day. That is going to create a tremendous amount of noise. If the people don't want to hear the train, they're going to shut their windows, and they're never going to hear Ready Pack. Every unit there has ventilation systems in their bathroom and has air conditioning in their houses, so that they don't have to open their windows if they don't want to. It's an option that they have. If it is something that bothers them, they can just close their windows and not be affected. And we're talking, the percentage of units that are anywhere in the region close to Ready Pack, I mean, it's a half a dozen units that are anywhere close to the train track or Ready Pack. Mind you, as you build a high-density project, those units shield the other units from the effects of the train, from the effects of the neighboring uses, which I personally paid for studies, had people come out and go all over the site and take noise readings and peek noises where the trains are coming by, and figuring out when the loading docks come, where the noise sources are, and try to determine how to mitigate it. I would like my residents not to hear any noises or hear as little as possible, and enjoy their property. That's my intent, and that's how I'm going to design the project. And I feel that we have. We will also notify all of the potential buyers of the surrounding uses, so they're not surprised by it. I don't want someone to buy a property and say, I didn't know there was a train that went by 42 times. I don't want someone to buy the property and say, I didn't know that Ready Pack loaded trucks there all the time. Everyone's going to have to sign something in advance that says they know that. I don't want to hurt Ready Pack. It's a business. Hire a lot of people, employ a lot of people. I don't know why they're coming here saying these things and talking about the things that they're saying, but I don't, I don't think that they're an issue, and I don't think that they are relevant. As far as what Mr. Warshaw said, I lived in a development with four-bedroom and three-bedroom houses. I lived in a four-bedroom house. I think there were 16 four-bedroom houses, and the remaining of the 52 units were three-bedroom units. There were two units that had small kids. If he doesn't believe me, there's nothing I can do about that. I don't believe him in what he says, so we're probably even, but I lived there. That was my experience for two years. That's what I saw. We, you know, we had the project parked to code. There's two spots in every garage. There's 67 guest parking spots. Having gone through the process, having seen a couple of developments and gone through this, we, I had talked to Jeff already about this, and I brought it up at the planning commission. I believe the commissioner, Betty, was asking about the parking and had lived in a condo development, and we went through the process where I intend to put something in the CCNRs that every three months, in order to get, you know, through the process, I want to require everyone, every unit to have one parking pass, only one. Now, that doesn't mean you're entitled to a parking spot because there's only .5 spots per unit, but that prevents one person from taking five parking spots. So each unit only has one parking spot. And in order to get your parking pass that goes on your car, we have to see that you have two open spots in your garage in order to park two cars. When you have a condo development, when you have high-density developments, everybody needs to work together. It's like you're living with 135 family members. And through the process and having lived in a condo development, I feel that if you manage it correctly, if you put the CCNRs, that you have to park two cars in your garage or have space for two, that only one guest per unit is the most possible per unit. Everyone will work together, and it will be a good project. One of the reasons why I added the guest parking spot, the increased parking lot for Prosperity Business Park, is because I was trying to create separation from the industrial use of Prosperity Business Park and the Heavenly Pet Resort and some of those uses over there. So I created a parking lot to add more parking to Prosperity Business Park, hoping to jump-start the sales of that spark that have been stalled for the last four years, and add parking to that to help Prosperity Business Park, to help the people who are the owners there, and to provide further separation from the industrial use to buffer from my proposed residential use. We're above code as far as the guest parking is concerned, or at code, but I didn't provide that extra parking for the condos because I wanted to provide a further buffer and provide more parking for the Prosperity Business Park. We have no intention of adding more, like Mr. Warshaw speculated. There's no intention of adding more. We don't want to add more because we can't sell what we already have. We don't want to build any more industrial. We tried that already and it didn't work. We have no intention of adding more, just to clarify. As far as his comments about there's no open space for children, like I said before, I don't think there's a tremendous need. I'm sure there's going to be children that live here. I have no doubt in my mind. At some point, people have children. I had a baby, and I moved from my three-story townhouse to a one-story house because I didn't want to have a baby inside of a three-story house with 33 stairs and all these things. So I moved, once we had the baby, to a one-story house. This is what, this is what I believe the city of West Covina is about, having multiple options for multiple different types of buyers, multiple different price points. And there was a comment about, it's not for the handicapped or the elderly. One unit in every single building will be a 3H. That is a handicap accessible unit. The sidewalk will run right to the door level. The doorways will be the correct width for handicap. The downstairs bathroom will have a spinning radius, and the downstairs shower will be one of the ones that can roll in, and you could have a wheelchair inside of that shower. That will be one in every single unit. That's the first time we've ever done that in any residential project. It's something that's come along with the code. It's something that we've worked with staff. And I think it will be a nice option for if someone has an elderly or disabled relative, that they will have a choice at this price point. And we built it with the grab bars and everything in, totally ready to go, at least one unit in every single building. So I don't know if that answers the question about what Mr. Warshaw said, but I wanted to point out, because I didn't bring it up in my initial conversation, that we do have one wheelchair accessible, totally accessible on the first floor for one unit in each building. And we do not have a tremendous amount of open space. We do not have a tremendous amount of giant fields for kids to play in. I concur that a lot of kids are not playing in fields and in open spaces as much as they were, but if were, but if they do, you have to have acres and acres. When I lived in the townhouse project, I was across from Ballin Park High School. We went to the high school to play with the dog or play sports. We're across the street from the school that I used to take my dog to, and we would go there and play basketball and stuff with my friends when I lived on Beddilo and San Bernardino Road in Ballin Park. You go to a school, no one has, no development, there's no project now that's going to have 10 acres of open space for kids to come and play. It doesn't exist. It's not an option. You have to go to a park. It's never going to be inside of a development. And no housing development in the 20th century is going to have space enough for kids to really play. I mean, it's one thing when they're 5, 10 years old, but once they get above 10, 12, they need areas to play soccer, and there's no development that's going to have that. That's what the $1.5 million in park inlufes is for. It's for me to give to the council, for them to purchase land or fix up property that they have and create a soccer field, or create a hockey rink, or something like that. That's why you have inlufes, because you can't put that type of stuff inside of a development anymore. It doesn't work. You give the inlufes to the city, and they consolidate multiple projects and do a great park, better than any developer could put inside of his project. And there was a comment about council not supporting developers who don't live in the city. The owner of the company, David Cook, lives in West Covina. My cousin, who's our broker and sells everything, lives in West Covina. I think that's two of our eight employees. So 25% of our staff lives in West Covina. And there was a comments by Mr. Johnson about the contamination. And I think it's a little bit of a misunderstanding when he commented that we only checked for contamination at six inches. We checked for contamination every six inches, and we went down feet along Blackards and Pick's lumber, and we went down with backhoes. We didn't bring a backhoe in, and we didn't bring drills in to dig six inches. We took samples and borings all over the site, anywhere they found paint, anywhere that they saw a lift dock, and we did a Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3 of 1773 San Bernardino Road. Any contamination that was found at 1773 was hauled off, incinerated, and we had the manifest for it when we did that project. Remember, we graded and demoed that project with the intent of building residential there. So we even cleaned up 1773 to residential standards the first time. There is no contamination. We answered a lot of these questions and concerns. At the planning commission meeting, there was a gas tank there many, many years ago. That was removed. It was cleaned up in the 80s. It was taken care of and documented with South Quality Air Management, and that was all taken care of. There is no contamination on site. We've done a Phase 1. It's a part of the NECDAC, and we have no intention of building property or building houses or industrial on contaminated soil. We've dealt with that already, and we're very diligent about that. We had a project in Assouza that I loved, and we did borings and testings, and it came back bad, and we did more borings and testings and brought people in, and it was bad, and we walked away. We had the project ready to go to the city council and planning commission, and we walked away because the contaminants was something that we couldn't do. And that's how we treated this project, and we was, right after we walked away from that project is when we put this one in escrow, and we did a tremendous amount of environmental review in the very early stages of this process before we released our deposits, to make sure that we didn't have a similar problem here, and we do not. The Blackards and the Pick's was a lumberyard. They were very good about that location, and they had almost nothing, except for where they had the paint mixer, and we dug all around there and looked it all up, and it was fine. Everything was clean. If you have questions about the CEQA and the NECDAC and some of that law, I have my consultants here. I also have a consultant that did a health risk assessment, doing a model of how many trucks come in for Ready Pack, and determining if the diesel particulates are a problem, or if there's a concern with the train and the diesel from the train. All that stuff came back negative. We did our due diligence. We responded when comments were made. We worked hard to find mitigation from the surrounding uses, and we're still, I'm still totally willing to meet with Ready Pack. I'm still totally willing to work with them through the process, but that, their comments about continuing it or disapproving it, they're not relevant here, and I don't think we have an effect on them. But I want to be a good neighbor, and I totally concur with the good neighbor policy. Barring that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much for that. Does council have any questions of our speaker? Legally, I don't know. Mr. City Attorney, can you please advise? There's someone in opposition wanting to...
Well, we've given everybody an opportunity to speak, and we've had, you know, we've had pros, cons, and rebuttal, so we're not obligated to accept any further speakers. If you wish to, that's up to the chair. If the chair makes a ruling, it's subject to review by, you know, someone can make a motion to review your decision, but the first decision to allow further speakers is the chair's.
Okay, well, then we're going to be going back and forth with rebuttal, so I'm going to go to my council colleagues and ask what their...
I just want about 20 seconds.
Council, which, pleasure, I'm going to ask the council's pleasure.
I've heard it.
Okay. Council's pleasure, I'd like to hear from the council.
Well, I'd like to hear from the CEQA and the safety, if we could.
Okay, so from the...
20 seconds, I don't know if you...
20 seconds.
Did I mean, I want to finish first here?
Sure.
Okay, if we could, I mean...
Absolutely, that's fine. Okay. Please come forward. Thank you.
It's 11 o'clock now, I'm not going in.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, for the record, my name is Mark Blodgett. I have the consulting firm Blodgett Bellosus, and we were retained by the applicant to assist in the preparation of the mitigated negative declaration that's before you tonight. What I'd like to do is respond to the question that was raised earlier, the comment raised earlier, that an EIR is needed for this project. Early on in this process, had I been asked if this needed an environmental impact report, and I was in fact asked, I indicated that a mitigated negative declaration would be the likely outcome, but to make that decision, we would have to go through a very comprehensive analysis. Now, that analysis involved the preparation of numerous technical studies, including the one that I prepared or my company prepared. That was then sent to the city planning department. They reviewed it, and following their review, they sent it to a third-party independent firm that did a peer review. So there were three independent phases of reviewing our study. In addition, there was a Phase 1, Phase 2 study that was done that updated an earlier series of soils studies. There was a new traffic study that was prepared, and also a new health risk assessment was prepared to update one that had been done in 2008. All of these studies amounted to about 220 pages of reports. So this isn't a checklist that was done, you know, in an abbreviated fashion. It's a very comprehensive, thorough review that's been independently reviewed for accuracy. We also received all of the various comments, and we included in our package, and that's part of the materials that you have before you, the comments from these various agencies or parties, and a point-by-point response. And we found that none of the information that we've received thus far would warrant either the preparation of an environmental impact report or warrant the recirculation of the mitigated negative declaration. You know, I think that people that have spoken on behalf of the study, you know, have done a really good job pointing out some of the key elements with respect to the noise and the other operational impacts from Ready Pack. If you look at the site plan, the great majority of the units are set back well away from that northern property line. The majority of the units are clustered in the central and southerly portion of the site, and in fact, along the majority of the northern portion is this parking area. So I think the applicant and their architects have done a good job in terms of doing a design that mitigates for a lot of these impacts. And then, of course, city staff and the other professionals that have been involved have added a large number of mitigation measures that will even more fully address potential impacts. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for that. Okay. You were okay, come on forward just briefly, and then I'm going to actually, I don't know...
Great. I just, Tom Levin for Ready Pack. And again, we're not taking a position for or against the project, but with respect to the evacuation plan, it's not only for Ready Pack employees. It's for everyone within a radius. Anyone who does a business like Ready Pack has to have an evacuation plan approved by the AQMD, EPA, Fire Department, Cal OSHA, and that project is within that radius. So we need time to figure out, how are we going to have an evacuation plan for 600 residents, and tonight, for the first time, I find out that some might be children. That's why, that's one of the reasons I requested a continuance.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We get this time, unless Mr. Cook wants to come forward and address that issue. If you have an evacuation plan, okay, then we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing and ask for any council discussion. Council discussion.
I'll kick it off. First off, the item with regards to the continuance, the letter of June 17th from the CEO, Dennis Guttmanian of Ready, or Foxtail Properties, clearly stated that they were going to object to the project in a few different ways, but, I mean, that's over a month, almost a month ago. Today's the 16th. That's June 17th that letter was sent. So the urgency, all of a sudden, to me, Ready Pack or Foxtail or whoever is objecting to that, I think there was ample notice given, so I wouldn't support a continuance tonight. Housing in West Covina, you know, the state is turning up the screws on all cities, trying to offer different kinds of housing. This offers a lower price tag for housing in our community, which is sorely needed. I think that the project offers enough amenities for the public, and I think it's well-designed. I think that the consultant that spoke on the mitigated negative declaration said that three groups reviewed it, I think he said, independent of each other, and came to the same conclusion. You know, one of the benefits that council has, that we used to not have, is Google Maps. And I went on Google Maps and I looked up Ready Pack, and there are parking, I mean, there is truck parking all over Ready Pack. It's not just on the south side. It's all over. It's on the west side. It's on the north side. And it's something that I think that the ER is mitigated with 11-foot-high wall, sound wall that will go up there. The other thing that kind of stuck out at me is that on the east side, I mean, there's homes right there, right across the street from Ready Pack, and that's where the central plant is located, which would have this ammonia source, which, if there was a leak, that would be the most likely place you would have a leak, although there probably is opportunities for leaks elsewhere. But it is, like somebody said, a refrigerated warehouse. There was a letter that I saw from an attorney that was talking about odors from onions and other sources like that. Well, those are going to be contained within that refrigerated warehouse, so you don't have odors come out of a warehouse like that. Somebody said that the company's looking into an expansion next year. Well, we can't determine our future here in West Covina on something that might happen. I had heard Ready Pack was going to expand two years ago, and it hasn't happened. So that's something that is intangible, that I don't think this council can deal with at this point. I think we've done our homework. I think we've done a good job with our staff analyzing this. I think our planning department has solicited input on it. I think it's a good project for the community. I believe it fills a need. As was stated, we have to fill 800 housing units in the city with our new housing element, which, for those of you that were involved in previous lawsuit on a project, we were chastised for not having our housing element up to date. Now it's up to date, and we know what we have to do, and so this is one of the solutions to it. So sometimes when you update stuff, it's not the best solution, but anyway, I will support the project.
Thank you. Counselor Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that we need to be extremely careful where we go because we are entangled far above our heads with litigation. I think that we owe the 117 folks that signed a petition that live in that community. I know that those folks are still somewhat disturbed by what happened on Quin Oak, and they felt that there was some sliding and underrepresentation. And I think that we owe it to those residents who've been living there for all these years, plus the new residents that have yet to come. We owe them an EIR report. Also, in order for us to be very careful about how we do things, it was indicated tonight that there may be some question of conflict, and that we have a party to the project that has an employee that is on the planning commission. And I think in order for things to be correct, this project should be returned to planning so that could be put on the record and ascertain clearly whether there is a conflict or if there is not a conflict. And I can't say enough about, we need to be careful. And I, for one, cannot support this project based on that. I think it should be returned to planning to do things correctly. Thank you.
Counselor McEntire.
Couple questions for staff. Just for ultimate clarity, Ready Pack is in Irwindale, correct?
That is correct.
So by chance, in the future, we have no regulatory authority over hours of operation for Ready Pack or so forth, correct? Because we're West Covina, they're Irwindale, they're their own independent government body, and we're ours over here.
They have their own standards and their own zoning and municipal code. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so pending, not, some other foreign reason that I don't know, forced down by the state or federal government, even if West Covina residents got upset, came to the council, said they didn't like it, they have no authority over our, this future council, whatever authority, has no ability to limit Ready Pack in any way, shape, or form, other than saying, hey, Irwindale, please, you know, just like Irwindale's coming to us right now, we would go to them and say, hey, please take us into consideration. But that's pretty much what we're limited to. Like, we'd be a citizen going to their meeting, basically, asking for...
That's correct.
So I would be in no way favor of, you know, unemploying 1,500 people. I mean, that would be, like, totally against that. And I don't think that this project actually does that. I mean, I've lived in downtown LA. I've seen all sorts of different ways people live. And as far as noise and trains and so forth, there's a real nice apartment complex right on the 110 freeway called the Medici in downtown LA. They get $2,400 bucks a month, and you're literally on top of the 110 freeway. And it's great. It's beautiful. You close your door, you can't hear anything, and there's different strokes for different folks. And I've heard comments about needing to stand up and talk for people in the community. Well, one group of people in the community that I think have been completely ignored are the people from the ages of 20 to 30. I, you know, comments have been made, a three- or four-bedroom house, that there's no children. I live in a three-bedroom house right now. I had two roommates. We, one of them moved out of my house and moved into almost like an identical version of this in downtown Covina at the City Ventures project because it was new, and because it was warranted, and because he didn't have to take care of it. He works for Northrop. He doesn't want to have to worry about those things. He doesn't have kids. He's not getting married. This is a new lifestyle. It's back in the 40s and 50s. People got married in the 20s. Now, not so much. Families are smaller. It's just a different, different time, and there's none of this type of product or very limited amounts of it in our city. And so for generations, I know, my friends, when they leave, they're not going to come back here. There's nothing for them as far as housing. I mean, they have to live in a single-family house if they choose to come back here, or in a 1960s, 70s apartment, and the rest of the world... in a 1960s, 70s apartment, and the rest of the world is out there. And they get to see what they get to experience, and you can go to Rancho Fontana, they're doing it in San Dimas, they're doing it in Upland, they're building them in Covina. And our youth leaves our community, the fabric of, you know, they're born and raised here, they go to school here, they love it here, they're leaving, and once they leave, they don't come back. So for generations, I mean, I'm, my friends, they all left. There's only a couple of us that are left back here, because really, there's nothing for us. So unless we provide products like this, we're gonna continue to lose generations of people. And I think that there's been a ton of brain cells expelled on this project, spent on this project. And to me, it looks great, and I think there's some concerns from people. I know, I know, change is tough, and, you know, it's better just to do nothing, but some people bought houses, I believe, up there when it was an industrial park, with trucks dropping lumber off, and tow trucks. And, you know, the customers picking up the lumber, the commercial guys picking up the lumber, going up and down the street, that was okay. But now residential, which is proven in planning, like, education, this is what we learn in school, that residential's generally less than commercial and industrial. So, I mean, whether you wanna believe it or not, but it was okay for big trucks, and it was safe for the school to operate with the big trucks and all that, but now a residential situation is somehow gonna be detrimental, and I just don't see it. It's just not the case. So, in any case, I'm for the project. I think they've done a great job. It looks great, and I just hope, we need more of it, to be honest with you. I mean, we don't have enough, obviously. We need 831 units, we only got 135. I just wanna point out the Olson deal, sold out before they were built, the City Ventures deal, sold out before they were built. That's how hungry we are in our area. Thanks.
Counselor Sotelo.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you all for staying out tonight so late. I realize, you know, it was, you know, it really means a lot, see people that care, and people that stayed out and wanna hear this. I heard a lot of things tonight, and Ready Pack, I wasn't really, all of a sudden, you came out of nowhere. You know, with these emails and all this stuff, and the Fox Properties, I know where you guys are coming from, you don't wanna, I mean, you're a landlord, you don't wanna lose your, like, you're a tenant. I can see where you guys are coming from. Ready Pack, I don't wanna see it leave, you know? We are a neighbor of Irwindale. We are friends, I hope, of Irwindale. And that's the last thing I'd hate to do, is see these people lose their jobs. I hope, you know, through the mitigation, that's why I was asking the property, the property owner, to tell me more about what they can do. I don't wanna see these people lose their jobs. I don't wanna see you close your plant, all right? But we have a blighted area in that part of West Covina, has been blighted for I don't know how long. In fact, you're behind PICS, you're behind Blackerts. Even was a Foster's Farm, when it was a farm back there, when I was growing up. You know, it's always been a different area back there. I'd like to see it there. I, I don't know what we could put back there, but right now, we have a chance to put housing back there, and if it's true, what Mr. Cook was saying, he's gonna work with our community. It's good for a general plan, the regional housing, it gives moderate pricing for people. I have young kids growing up right now, they're in their early 30s, early 20s, and they're looking for a place to live, to stay in West Covina. My one daughter had to buy a house away from her house, she lived in Camarillo, she couldn't afford a Camarillo, she had to go to Auctionard. But we're giving people in West Covina an opportunity to buy a house, not a million-dollar house in South Hills, or another house over there by my church for $500,000. But we're giving them an opportunity. We're giving also an option for people. We're getting rid of blight. I think we're working with others. We're working with the city of Irwindale. We're not gonna try to get rid of this. The area, like the man from Blackerts says, the area needs help. The area needs help, and it needs help for a while. And I think this is one of the solutions. And we have, we have a person that's gonna be willing to give their time and to work with us and give this opportunity. I have to support this project this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you, everyone, for staying so late. We will get on with this. I did wanna make a couple of brief comments in reference to some things that were mentioned about having children. I have four, I have an acre, and I go to the park a lot. They don't even play in my backyard half the time, they like the park. And that's why parks are actually really important in our community. I'm not going to say what business it is of people buying these houses, or who's gonna live there, or what, but one thing I can say is that my mom had to move to the desert because she wanted to be a homeowner. That was a big thing to her. So she bought a house out, you know, hours away from her family, which was absolutely, you know, hard for me to handle. So, you know, I'm hoping that provides that kind of an opportunity for people. I think that the staff did an amazing job with the report. A lot of my questions were answered, because I did have many. I'm looking at the site map here, and behind where a lot of the houses are, there's gonna be a parking, and there's a big giant wall there. The trucks are near, over where I see any trucks, or near where the storage units are. So I wanted just to make those points. I also wanted just to bring up that, over the years I've been on this council, there's a group of people that have tried to paint a picture of exclusiveness for me. But I'd like to make it very, very clear that I'd love those people to come to my area and come see that there are condos, there's apartments, there's auto dealers, there's a shopping center, there's a freeway, there's storage units, and I can see from my property, not that I disagree with it, it's there when I bought the house. But the reality is, is I care about the complete entire city of West Covina, and I wanna look at each project individually. I don't see any direct neighbors, other than Ready Pack, which is actually a concern in the city of Irwindale, or, yeah, was it Irwindale? Yeah. That are coming here saying, these are gonna be my neighbors, and I don't want them. These are people that are looking for housing. You know, I looked at this whole thing and, and saw, okay, what are our options for this property, for this developer? I believe he can go build a, like, some type of a industrial, is what it's zoned for. I don't think the people on the right side would want that. I don't think the people or anybody else. And one of the things I wanna really bring up, too, is that I've been on a council for probably about 13 years, and there's decisions I've made that people have been in support of, and I'd love to have that support. However, there's been decisions that I've made that people don't support, like the gymnasium, okay? But now, everybody's using it, and everybody's happy. The big league dreams. I mean, meeting after meeting of controversy and, you know, drama. And it got built, and I have more people coming up to me and say, what a wonderful facility, and look how much business and vitality it's brought to the city. Now, I wanna bring up this developer that stands here before us tonight, D.C. Corp Properties. They've done several projects in that area, the Orange and Beddilo Housing, the business condos that they had mentioned, and now this project. And what I find very interesting is the same few residents come here and say something about this organization, about this group that's just trying to help and better West Covina. And so I guess I mention that because, to me, it seems like things get brought up for election reasons. And what I'd like to say is, from my seat, I'm here to do the best job for my community and the best balance, and, and this is, they own the property, and I'd much rather see these homes and give the opportunity for people to buy housing than to have an industrial unit that may sit vacant or have the neighbors on the right not happy. I mean, I think this is a good solution. So with that, I will support the motion, or actually, the resolution tonight, the two resolutions that we do have, which at this time would mean, oh, and the other comment I wanted to make that I did write down, and I put a little star and circled it, something I heard from the developer, and it made me feel really good, and that was, the developer would be more than willing to meet with Ready Pack and to meet any, you know, it sounds like they want to make sure everything goes very smooth, and I see him shaking his head back there. So I think this can be a really good project for, for the community and for the residents. So with that, a motion is in order for our two resolutions.
Motion to adopt the resolutions? Do we wanna read them?
Yeah. Let's adopt them one at a time. We have, the first resolution to adopt is the resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration. That's on your agenda outline, it's number one.
Number one, okay. Motion.
That's Resolution Number 201353, Resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, certifying the mitigated negative declaration of the environmental impact for general plan amendment number 1301, zone change number 1301, and tentative track map 72152 pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970 as amended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four aye, one oppose?
Aye, opposed.
Correct. Thank you. Next resolution.
Following Resolution Number 201354, Resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving general plan amendment number 13-01.
Motion to adopt.
All second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, opposed. Aye, opposed.
Motion carries four to one.
The last item for your approval would be the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina approving zone change number 1301, and this would be an introduction.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Okay, thank you again. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and we will quickly get to the agenda so people can get home. We have our successor agency to recess the city council meeting at 11:31, and convene the successor agency meeting, and we have a separate agenda for that. And I do, I need a roll call.
Chairman Sanderson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Herrford?
Here.
Board Member McIntyre?
Here.
Board Member Sotelo?
Here.
Board Member Sykes?
Here.
Thank you, we have our consent, and so I am looking for the agency...
Madam Mayor, motion to approve all items on consent calendar.
Thank you.
All second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Motion to adjourn?
Submove.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor to adjourn the successor agency at...
Aye.
Aye? Okay, well, I'll call aye.
Aye.
Now, I wanna go back to our reconvening the city council meeting at 11:32. Mayor and council members' reports? We have no reports, any AB 123 conference? I don't see any on the agenda? No? Okay. I have, next item is a mother may I item, item number 14. Briefly, I just wanted to, I've had some conversations with PD and just people out throughout the community in reference to the AB 109, the public safety realignment, and, you know, that's going to be an issue for our police and an impact, and I would like to bring, I guess this is gonna come back anyhow, to send a letter to Governor Jerry Brown to seek help, funding, assistance in dealing with these type of issues that our city's going to face. So I would like to ask my colleagues if they would support bringing this back for further discussion.
I move to bring it back for further discussion.
Okay, thank you, and I will...
I second.
I know, I got a second, so thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great, thank you. And next, I have Councilmember Andrew McIntyre's request for city council support to consider an ordinance pursuant to the spirit of petition.
All right, I'm, I'm a pretty positive person, and I like to promote West Covina in a positive way and talk about West Covina in a positive way. I want everybody to be talking about West Covina in a positive way. And since I've been on council since February, a common theme that has been going on has been just a lot of disgruntled citizens with regards to the development of the Civic Center property. And to get this all behind us and maybe get the city united and to embrace the positive things that are gonna be happening here in the city over the next few months and years, I was wondering if I could get some support from my council colleagues to see if we could create an ordinance that would adopt the, the spirit of what was proposed as far as the limiting of development at the Civic Center. It needed a little help with the wording on the petition when it was originally, just for legal purposes, but the basic spirit of that to, to bring back to council.
Okay. Did you wanna make a motion on that, or did you...
I make a motion to, to work on an ordinance or bring back an ordinance to, with the spirit of the law, of the petition, to limit the development of Civic Center property.
Okay.
I second that.
I got two, three seconds? So I guess that you're in. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Next, we'll jump down to Mayor Pro Tem Steve Herrford's request, seeking the city's council support to have staff prepare a report banning donation drop boxes in the community.
Madam Mayor, this is just a mother may I. I think I'd like to drop the banning word in there. Let's, just get a staff report on them. They are popping up quite a bit around town. I've been talking to staff about them, we've been removing the ones that aren't approved, but rather than put in banning, let's just have a discussion as to how to regulate them, so I'll make a motion to...
You wanna report regarding drop boxes?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. There you go.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, great. So we have some items that'll be up and coming on our future agendas.
And that doesn't need to come back right away. I also wanted to see if I could add another item. We're having some pedestrian traffic problems at Roland and Sunset. If I could get a staff report with the potential to add one of those flashing crosswalks at that intersection, it's right across from the Little League there.
I'll second your motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
To bring that back? Is that 5-0? Okay, fantastic, thank you. With that, any other council comments or any adjournments this evening? Everyone's quiet, must be tired. It's 11:35, and I would love to have a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, we have a hand coming up over here, Councilmember Sykes.
Just briefly, we had a, a case that kind of rocked the nation this weekend, and with that, I would just like to say that this is vacation time, and a lot of people are traveling and leaving the comforts of, of our location here. And I just strongly suggest that they, in preparation to, to travel to various places, that they check the laws and check to make sure that they have information about how to contact local law enforcement in case they run into a situation that makes them uncomfortable and frightened. And that would be it, just, just be safe. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?